Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 14 edition of your City Council of Redevelopment Agency. Tonight, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Boy Scout Troop 321.
All the audience, please rise. Tallyguards, front center. Tallyguards, please prepare to present the color. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tallyguards, please close the color. The audience may be seated.
Thank you, Troop 321. Would you like to come forward and give us your names and school and whatever else you'd like us to hear? This is your time.
I'm William Jerry. I go to Stellerman.
My name's Elias Frangos. I go to Carmont High School.
And was there one more, I thought? There we go.
I'm Nick Frangos, and I go to Terlinda Middle School.
Very good. Thank you. Good job. Next, there are changes to the order of agenda. I'd like to suggest a couple of changes, considering the audience as well as the order stated in the agenda. I'd like to move the presentations up before reports to council. So if we could do the presentations after the council communication announcement, and then I'd like to move 10A right after the consent calendar before item eight. 10A goes to right before item eight. Is that acceptable? All right. Any other suggested changes, staff?
We have none.
All right. Then let's do our order of agenda. Next is council communications. We'll start tonight with Councilmember Grocott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report that we did have a team go down to Pass Christian recently and do some work down there on homes. And the team included Cheryl Pomerank from the Chamber of Commerce and Cheryl Hochstetter. She was past president of the Chamber of Ward at one time. And one of our teachers, Candace Richardson, and then one of our planning commissioners, Randy Royce. And I went along as well. I was absolutely amazed at the amount of work we were able to get done. We helped a fellow frame up a house. When we got there, there was nothing but a platform up on pylons. They build the homes now up about eight feet off the ground because of FEMA requirements. But when we got there, there was a platform about eight feet off the ground with a set of stairs going up. And when we left, we had the exterior walls framed up and sheathed, the ceiling joists in, and about 50 percent of the roof rafters in in one day. Now, we didn't do that ourselves alone. There were other teams, volunteer teams, that we worked with to get that much work done. And also while we were there, we worked at one of the churches in town to help put in a playground. And then other days, we just did odd jobs in various things around town, helping out. So it was a very successful trip. We also had some functions with their chamber and our chamber where one night we hosted a dinner and another night their chamber hosted a dinner. And then Candace, being a teacher, went and met with one of the middle schools there. And she's initiating a program between some of our middle schools and their middle school in Pass Christian. So all those things just made it a very nice event, or excuse me, a trip. We are planning another trip in October of this year to go again. And we weren't talking about going in September, but because of weather conditions and they could still possibly have storms and so forth that time of year, they're encouraging us to wait until October. We, in anticipation of that trip, are going to be offering some classes in the fall through Parks and Recs. If you're interested, you might watch for classes. We're going to do two nights, one in August and one in early September. They'll be the exact same class. The idea is if someone's on vacation or on a family trip in August and misses that first class, they could catch it again in September. And the class will simply talk about what a trip is like, what to expect, what you might see, and the kinds of things that folks are expected to bring. And with that trip, I personally have a goal of taking 10 people who know the insides and out of some construction, because of what I saw between Randy and I, especially being there, we were able to get quite a bit done. And then in addition, to have people going along who maybe don't know construction, but one thing that we recognize that's really needed there still is folks who just would sit down with the people who went through the storm, sit and listen to their story, talk to them, help them out in those kinds of ways, in more of a personal way. That is very much needed. And for instance, that's some of the, those are some of the things that Cheryl Pomerank did when she was there. So that's our goal come October. One last thing about the trip. We have a fellow who runs one of the nonprofits and coordinates a lot of the work there, Randy May of Randy's Rangers. He and his wife Debbie will be here and in our hometown days parade this weekend. And they will also be at the booth. We intend to have a booth at Burton Park where if people are interested in Pass Christian and the efforts there, they can stop by the booth and get more information.
Thank you. Councilmember McRuselli?
I have nothing for that, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I just want to report to council, I met with Chair Cecily Harris of Park and Rec Commission. You know, as we talked about our different liaisons, we're doing a quarterly meeting with Chair of Park and Rec Commission. And nothing specific to report, and then we tried to get, again, on the same page as what's before the commission right now and what's upcoming on our goals and so forth. I updated her on our recent budget meeting, just so we have an idea of what was coming up in the last year. We talked a little bit about Measure G, which sunsets in a couple of years, and maybe the commission, along with Director Weiss, can start doing a little bit of thinking about that in advance for us. And also, there's Park Master Plan and so forth. So we just talked about some general goals and so forth. Had a good meeting, and we'll do it again with a new chair next quarter.
Very good. And I'd just mention a few things elsewhere this very evening. There's a group celebrating the retirement of Joyce Strauss from our Arts and Culture Commission. Joyce served for many, many years. Her time is up, and she'll be moving on and doing other things. We all, many of us know Joyce, and she's very talented. So if there's anything that you really need done, remember Joyce is out there loose and looking for work. That's my editorial comment, but it's worth a try. But we do congratulate her on the time spent, and we thank her for many good years in that commission. Secondly, we are celebrating Hometown Days this weekend. We're all ready for that. Big parade coming up on Saturday. Contrary to common reports, there will be no rain. Everything's going to be wonderful, and the weather will be good. So you all here, plus everyone at home, please join us for the festivities at Burton Park. Next item, EDAC has, Economic Development Advisory Commission, has reviewed, taken their first review of the report that we all have, the council members got this evening, the draft economic development plan. It was a very interesting discussion last Wednesday. There'll be another discussion this Wednesday as they get more into detail and develop some ways in which to bring the plan forward. So let the public know, because many of the public were involved in supplying information that went into that plan. So stay tuned, and we expect to see a program of action developing soon. Another item coming up, in the month of June, the San Carlos Fine Arts Group will join with the San Carlos Museum Group and open a museum for showing the art of our San Carlos Arts Group. So it'll be an art showing, a museum showing, a great time for the community to rally around the museum and see good art and share awesome social time and refreshments. I'll ask Brian if we can put that on the website, on the homepage, as an item as to the times and so forth. But we will have more information at the next meeting, and I'll relay that to the audience as well. And then finally, you may have noticed that we've got some pretty good-looking flower pots hanging on Lowell Street. This is a result of a team that got together a couple of months ago and replanted those pots. The city took them down, and the team got together and put in new flowers. This is led by a group of master gardeners, Tina Murphy, Judith Dean, and Virginia Martin. They did a great job. The baskets are back up. They're being watered well automatically, and they're looking really good. So next time you get down on Lowell Street, just look up a little bit and check those baskets. I think you'll appreciate what these fine volunteers have done. So with that, we will move into the presentation section of our agenda. And it's our pleasure tonight to honor three fine fellows who have completed their requirements for the Eagle Scout Award. It's Travis Benson, Chris Owens, and Taylor Skeels. And I'd like to come down and honor these fellows. Gentlemen, come forward here. It's our honor to do this from time to time for troop members who have achieved this high level of award and recognition on the part of scouts. The gentlemen are always anxious to stand here and talk to me about what they've done, and we'll let them have a chance to do that soon. But I do want to just mention for the audience that this is the highest honor in scouting. It is something that takes many years, and as you see the badges, a lot of dedication in various areas. And we applaud these fellows for going through this and for achieving this high award. So I have a proclamation for each, and let me read one, and they do read the same except for the name. So here we go. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a character-building organization composed of young men who are seeking to prepare themselves as better leaders and citizens for tomorrow by developing these traits and strengths of character of all people. And whereas scouting plays a vital force in the lives of many hundreds of boys in the city of San Carlos, who are guided by a great many adult volunteers who have given generously of their time and talent, and whereas especially a unique honor of achieving the highest award in scouting has been earned by these three gentlemen, now therefore it is resolved that I, Tom Davis, the mayor, congratulate these gentlemen for earning the Eagle Scout Award and commend them for their accomplishments for scouting. So Travis Benson.
Thank you, sir.
Taylor Skeels. Now, before you sit down, you know, part of the Eagle process is there has to be a project, and we always like to hear what these gentlemen have done for their projects. So in turn, would you please come forward and tell us about the project?
My name's Chris Owens, and for my project, I built a bench at the Redwood Shores Dog Park.
My name is Travis Benson, and I also built a bench at the Redwood Shores Dog Park, but it was a different model and a different part of the park, so not quite the same project.
My name's Taylor Skeels, and I built a bench in a park as well. And yeah, a little bit different from those guys, but benches are popular this year, so.
Well, it's good to know we got three benches, and we can call this all the Bench Brothers from here on. But thank you very much for the work you've done, and good luck in the future. The second presentation is by the Association of Bay Area Governments Representative Regarding the Grant Funding for Risk Management Program. Jeff?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Jeff Malpe. I'm the city's Administrative Services Director. Marcus Beverly, who is the Association of Bay Area Governments Risk Manager and Plan Director. The city participates with a number of other cities in what's known as A-BAG Plan to pool our general liability insurance with other agencies.
Turn it over to Marcus now for your presentation.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor and council. Thanks for having me. And yes, I'm here on behalf of A-BAG, Association of Bay Area Governments, and your 30 other members. You are one of 31 cities and towns here in the Bay Area that pool your risks, and we have set a number of benchmarks and goals for our members over the last couple of years. We call them our Risk Management Framework and Best Practices. And I'm here to congratulate you. First of all, the City Council, you may remember passing or reaffirming a resolution to commit yourself to risk management and policies overall. Your city manager, Mark Weiss, and certainly Brian Moore, Jeff Malpe, all the folks in your city manager's office have been working very hard doing the risk management policy, what we call our IIPP, or your IIPP, Injury and Illness Prevention Plan, along with Bob Lenzone, your city attorney, your Risk Management Committee. We've got a lot of people involved and a lot of hard work that's been done over about the last 18 months to complete this. Not everybody's done it yet, but I'm here to say you have achieved that. I'm here to say thank you. I want to also say thanks to your Public Works Department, Parvise. Last time I was here, you were talking about that sewer ordinance, so that was one of the hurdles that you jumped through as well. Chief Rothis, Greg Rothis, has also been a big supporter. Video cameras and police cars is something that we've supported, and we've given you grants for that, updated your general orders, and he's been a very big supporter as well. So I have this Certificate of Appreciation, recognizing the city of San Carlos as a best practices city, and states San Carlos excels in risk management activities, including Injury and Illness Prevention Plan, that IIPP, sewer and sidewalk risk management, vehicle risk management, and police operations. And A-BAG Plan commends the city's actions and its engaged professional staff. These efforts, instead of a big check, I'm giving you this framed plaque, because this does entitle you to $10,000 to fund additional risk management activities, and it also clears the way to what's probably going to be about $50,000 worth of grants for next year. So stay tuned, keep up the efforts, and I want to say thanks.
Thank you very much.
You know, it goes without saying, when all goes, starts going south, it's great to have good risk management. So we really appreciate what's been done to protect the city from situations that can turn out to be very, very difficult. And it's great to be at this level and have achieved this, and we appreciate your coming and giving us the award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that will go back to item four, Reports to Council. These are reports typically from staff, and they're information in nature with no action being taken at this time. And item A under Reports is a review of the Building Department Best Practices, otherwise known as the Zucker Report. Well, Jack?
Good evening, Mayor Davis and council members. In 2004, the city selected Zucker Systems to examine the development review process and specifically the Building Division's procedures. This examination involved interviews and surveys with contractors, owner builders, and virtually everyone connected with the permit process. The report that was issued in 2004 listed 57 recommendations to improve the process. Over the almost three years since the report was issued, the Building Division has corrected or completed 49 of the 57 recommendations, approximately 86 percent of the total recommendations. Later this year, two more of the recommendations will be implemented, which is the Structural Software Package that will come onboard with the ICC approval, which is our newer code showing up at the end of the year, and also a Policy and Procedures Handbook of the policies and procedures of the Building Department. Three recommendations were met by using other methods. We selected, we determined that the Microsoft Calendar was a simpler system to use than the TideMark scheduler that was a part of the TideMark program. We also replaced the recommended checklist by the Zucker Systems Report with the standard ICC Plan Check guideline handbook. And lastly, we, the Zucker Report suggested that we should have our single clerical person input 40 to 50 bits of information from the various inspections during each day. We found it more productive to have the inspectors input their own results into the computer so it makes more sense. We also have three recommendations that are presented to the council as options to consider. They are Original Zucker Option, or Recommendation Number Four, which is suggesting an Industry Advisory Council or Committee. Their item number 17, which is Field Computers for the Building Inspectors in the Field. Makes sense? And 47 inspectors, I'm sorry, and 51 property inspections upon sale, along with one other recommendation to reconsider, which is Multiple Plan Check Consultants. And lastly, an option that was not even in the initial Zucker Report, Internal and External Expedited Plan Checking Program. Since this is a report to council and no action is necessarily required, we request that the council direct staff to evaluate several of the options in the report, such as multiple plan check consultants, expedited plan check, and field computers for the inspectors, and report back to council in July or August with a comprehensive basket of information regarding these options. And I believe I can answer any questions regarding the report or the individual items.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions for Jack? Are we all ready to ask Jack to proceed as suggested? Jack, we like what you've done. It's a good report. We'd like you to carry on with option 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Thank you, sir. We'll do that.
And we'll see you in July or August.
And 4.
Good. Thank you. Next item is public comment. Items presented at this time for public comment are limited to two minutes. They are to be, items not on the listed agenda. And we have one speaker slot from John Hoffman. John?
John Hoffman, 909 Crestview Drive. I don't know if you have all seen the Sunday edition of the Daily News, but on the front page is a Hydrogen Shuttle Approval Article. The net of this is a proposal, and I presume it has been approved, to run a hydrogen-powered shuttle from public transport to work sites. The cost of this is $500,000 for a two-year lease from the Ford Motor Company. In addition to that, there's another quarter of a million dollars in costs to run the program for a total of $750,000. Now, the statement's been made, and I've checked this with Bob McRuselli, who confirms it, as well as the author of the article, that there'll be a maximum of 60 miles per day, and of course, there are two 22 days, working days, per year, and it'll only run working days. If you do the math on this, taking into account the lease and the running costs, the cost per mile is $28.15. I cannot imagine that any group and level of governments can be so profligate as to put up this type of program. Now, Bob has explained that it's cutting-edge stuff, and cutting-edge stuff is expensive. I think the people that are represented would not approve of this if they knew about it. And I would ask you, as a council, to be the ones to stand up and say, wait a minute. This doesn't make common sense. And to work with whoever the people are to either modify this program and certainly not to support it in any way at $28.15 per mile. Thank you.
Thank you. I did notice the article, apparently this is being operated by Sea Cake, our local county group, and perhaps for the benefit of the council and the public based upon the news article, we can obtain more information as to what is being done here and what they attempt to accomplish, and perhaps some justification for the dollars, which are very, very high. I think if you calculate the amount per passenger for a two-year operating cost is about $18 a ride, and the general head of the numbers beyond that. So for the benefit of our process, if we could get more information, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we're moving on to Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Any items to remove from council? Staff? Public? All right. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, please.
And you have to read item D, please.
Good, Mr. Mayor. Item D is Authorized Adoption of Ordinance Number 1388, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code 5.04.080, Temporary Business Registration, also Chapter 5.52, which is Restaurant Permits and Sections 12.04.040 and 050, Sidewalk Repair Permits, and Chapter 10.40, Bicycles.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Grocott?
Councilmember McRuselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teakle Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Through the chair, just very quickly, I apologize for being late. Work kept up.
Good to see you. All right. We're moving now to item 10A, going out of order for the benefit of portions of our audience. This is consideration of the resolution. No, I'm sorry. I didn't want to do 10A. I wanted to do 10B. I'm sorry, Mark. Fire guys can stay around a little while. These climate control people I want to take care of. Okay, this is a discussion, the Climate Change Program for the City of San Carlos and US Mayor's Final Protection Agreement, Kyoto Protocol. and US Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, Kyoto Protocol Letter. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As you probably know, there's been a lot of discussion in the last year about the topic of climate change. And a year ago, at one of the city council strategic retreats, the council asked staff to begin to work on this project. As is indicated in the staff report, the city manager asked me to begin work in earnest on this in March with the recognition that our flood land use committee is going to be ending on June 30th, and so I'll be phasing out of that effort and phasing into this one. What I found is that the level of interest is so high that we're actually starting the project early. And indeed, I was pleased to see today in our email, we got a letter from one of our residents that said that he'd seen this report on the web and thought it was fantastic. I'm not sure I can live up to that accolade, but we'll certainly try. In terms of the context of where we are, we provided to the council tonight a study that was provided by the League of California Cities that talked about a lot of the scientific background around climate change, and I won't go into the detail on that for you, although we've heard from a host of experts, and if at some point you'd like to go into the scientific discussion, we could certainly provide a parade of people to do that. The other two things that we need to be aware of are Senate Bill One, that was passed by a bipartisan vote two years ago by the legislature and was signed by Governor Schwarzenegger, which provides incentives for both residential and businesses for using solar power. However, those incentives do step down as more and more solar power comes online. Also, there is AB 32, which sets a goal of reducing so-called greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by the year 2020. This is very similar to the goal set out in the US Mayor's Kyoto Letter. Right now, AB 32 does not apply to cities except for those that have water and electrical utilities. However, there is legislation pending in Sacramento that would change that to provide that it would cover all cities. So, we are tracking that. And finally, as I note in the slides, there have been a number of calls to action for cities and counties to take a leadership role due to the lack of action at the federal level up until now in this area. I wanted to show you some of the different climate change initiatives that the city has been approached about. I think it's fair to say that these days, it's probably easier to find groups that are in this space than are not. We've had a barrage of different groups urging the city to take action in this area, including the Council of Mayor's Kyoto Letter, which you got last year, Sustainable Silicon Valley, Sustainable San Mateo County, the so-called International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, also better known as ICLE, the Sierra Club Cool Cities Initiative, the League of California Cities, ABAG, the Air Board. There's also a group of ABAG, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Air Board called the Joint Policy Committee, or the JPC. And finally, the City-County Association of Governments, C-Keg, has recently established a Utilities and Sustainability Task Force, which is made up of several city council members and mayors throughout the area. So, there are plenty of groups that are active in this area. We've had a number of requests for membership and funding. And one of the things I want to talk about with you tonight and paint a picture is I think there is a way that we can be responsive in this area and yet do so in a very cost-effective fashion. One of the things that has happened recently is Joint Venture Silicon Valley has put out a survey about climate change initiatives to all the cities in San Mateo and Santa Clara County, the Silicon Valley area. And to date, there have been 24 responses to that survey, and I think this gives you a flavor for what cities around Silicon Valley are doing in this area. 50 percent of the cities either have or are planning to conduct a so-called inventory of carbon emissions. This is typically the first step in a climate initiative project. 25 percent of the cities have approved carbon emission reduction goals, and that would include signing the Kyoto Letter that we have talked about previously and is a part of the staff report. 33 percent have resident-based organizations that advise and work with the city, and in a bit, I'll talk about the one that has recently formed in our community. 79 percent have building retrofit programs to reduce energy use, and as you know, that's something San Carlos has done in the past. In the coming budget, almost half of the cities are now assigning staff to work on this project, although the staff typically is at one full-time equivalent or less. And over half the cities plan to fund work in the climate change area in their coming year budget. In most cities, that amount is under $50,000. However, two cities, or excuse me, three cities will be budgeting over $100,000, and in the case of the city of San Jose, they are committing $2 million next year. In terms of projects or investments, and again, some of these will seem very familiar to you, as these are areas where San Carlos has also been active, 87 percent of the cities have already been involved in LED traffic signals, 79 percent in lower energy lighting, 77 percent more efficient pumps, 64 percent are buying hybrid vehicles, 48 have done solar and voltages. And in terms of, in the coming year, you see that again, there's a lot of interest in both solar and photovoltaics and hybrid vehicles, and we're even seeing some people working on biodiesel projects such as the city of Pacifica and Milbrae. So, let's talk a little bit about what's going on in San Carlos. And again, many of the things that cities have done to date are things that we have also done. Several years ago, we worked with PG and ABAG on a project to make lighting and city buildings more efficient, particularly at City Hall. That project is complete. We've also done an HVAC, a heating, ventilating, and air conditioning retrofit at City Hall to make the building more energy efficient. As you probably know, several years ago, we won state and national awards for one of the first solar projects in California at our Corporation Yard. Parvise Mokhtari was one of the first adopters in California of the LED traffic signals, and this year, in this coming budget, we will do the final phase of that, which is the yellow LEDs. Due to the technology, they come in waves, and the third wave is now available. Your council last year took a leadership role in this area by eliminating solar permit fees altogether for a two-year period. You took them down to zero. And finally, Planning has done some early work with a couple of residents who put together green buildings and issuing permits, and we have more planned in the coming year budget. So, let's talk a little bit about the budget, and we did chat a little bit about this last week at your council budget work session. One of the first things that staff is proposing is to do an initial inventory of the city's carbon footprint. It seems to staff that before we can get into a whole lot of other work in this area, we first have to find out what our level of greenhouse gas emission is, both at the current level and the 1990 level. That's useful not only to determine whether or not we could take steps to comply with AB 32, assuming that it will ultimately cover us, but also will be very helpful in terms of the council ultimately evaluating whether or not you wish to sign the mayor's letter, the Kyoto Letter. The cost of this project, we believe, will be somewhere between $14,000 and $25,000 on a one-time basis. This will largely depend on how many cities participate in these inventories. Obviously, if you get a number of cities together, you get a lower cost. We also talked to you last week about the potential of beginning to replace city vehicles as they come up for replacement in our equipment, replacement program. With hybrid vehicles rather than conventional vehicles, there is an additional incremental cost, and we estimate in the first year, that would be in the neighborhood of $20,000. And finally, we have had some requests for membership in various groups. The only two that, at this point, that staff feels might be worthy of consideration are relatively low-cost items, namely the ICLE group, which in San Carlos's case would be $600, and the Sustainable Silicon Valley group, which would be $1,000. Now, I'm going to talk to you about four different efforts that staff is beginning to look at and things that we recommend moving forward. These are, as I indicated earlier, have the benefit of both having a lot of value to San Carlos and also happen to be very low cost. The first is a branding project from Joint Venture Silicon Valley, a very familiar name to all of you. As you know, San Carlos was a charter member of Joint Venture Silicon Valley in the 90s when it was formed to help revive the Silicon Valley economy. This new project is called the Climate Protection Task Force, and it is designed to develop solutions for cities and counties in Silicon Valley working together. The group had its first meeting last week, and over 50 people attended, primarily from the cities and counties and the two counties in this area. Some of the things that the task force is targeting is looking at best practices, sharing information, looking at things such as financing, pilot projects, et cetera. And because San Carlos is already a member of Joint Venture Silicon Valley, this project would be free. There is no cost to us to participate. And here, here again, in a bit more detail, are some of the task force items that the group decided on last week, things such as conducting inventories, working with other organizations, providing educational programs, analyzing solutions, procurement pools, et cetera. I think one of the values that we see at the staff level in this project is the ability to pull together resources from all the earlier initiatives that you saw, and hopefully use this as a resource and a funnel, and participate in many of these regional efforts through joint venture rather than joining a series of the other programs. The next program I wanted to talk to you about was San Carlos Green, and I should mention several members of San Carlos Green are in the audience tonight, and you may wish to hear from them after you hear from me. This is a brand-new, community-based volunteer organization that's formed in San Carlos. They've launched their website today, and they'll be having a booth at Hometown Days this weekend. This is an outgrowth of the Enhancing the City of Good Living Project that was started back when Councilmember Teagle Doherty was the mayor. And San Carlos Green is active in a number of green areas. For this particular discussion, it is relevant that they are interested in working with the city in the climate change arena, and most specifically, working with the community, encouraging the community to work on reducing carbon emissions, to look at solar power and things of that sort. And sort of the way we see it at the staff level is that while we have a host of challenges and opportunities focusing on internal operations and city government, we really don't have the bandwidth to work with either the business community or the community at large. And so, we think that groups like San Carlos Green and also the Chamber of Commerce could be valuable partners as we move forward in this project, with San Carlos Green taking the lead in the community space, and the Chamber taking the lead in the business space, and the city, of course, working on city affairs. Another project that we're working on is, we're working with a group based in Foster City called Solar City. They have a very innovative program called the Community Solar Discount Program. And essentially, the way this works is recognizing that two-thirds of the cost of putting in solar panels is actually not the panels and materials, but rather the labor and the marketing. Solar City is offering to selected cities in Silicon Valley the opportunity to take group purchases of solar panels, and if they reach a certain threshold of offering everyone in the community a 15 percent discount on the installation. It's also a very interesting company in that to put in the solar panels, one has to have a high-speed connection to the internet, namely a DSL or cable modem connection, because the company will actually monitor the solar panel, and if it starts to not perform, they'll come out and repair it for you. So, they kind of monitor it quietly in the background. The project started initially in the city of Portola Valley. They had a lot of success there. They moved to the city of Mountain View next, and they're now in Menlo Park. I've met with Solar City, and they announced last week that they are willing to work with San Carlos, and so their plan is to start on June 1st with a similar solar discount program in San Carlos. The idea would be that they would have a website for signups for our residents, and indeed, that actually was turned on this morning, so that's now available at solarcity.com. And they will be in the booth with San Carlos Green this weekend at Hometown Days. They will basically give the community 90 days to sign up for the program, and again, if they reach that threshold of homes, then people in San Carlos who are interested in solar installations will be able to enjoy this discount. So, we think this is a very interesting program, and I should add as a side note, the people who fund Solar City are also the folks buying Tesla Motors and other familiar named folks in San Carlos. And then we have the Green Business Program. This is a program that was started by ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, 10 years ago in Alameda County, and it has spread around the Bay Area. It has all but two of the nine counties participating at this point, namely our county and Santa Cruz, I think it's Santa Cruz or Solano County is the other one. And both of those counties are now participating. We were approached a couple of months ago by John Maltby, the county manager, and also by Mark Church. I'm sure all of you know the county supervisor representing North County. And we agreed to be one of the six pilot cities for this program. Basically, the way it works is businesses in selected categories, and in this case, the pilot we're targeting restaurants, auto repair shops, hotels, and office complexes as the first wave, have to meet a series of green standards and hurdles. And if they're able to do so, and they basically work with the city, we imagine that they probably, we would work with the Chamber and the county as well. Once they meet these hurdles, they are certified as green, and then if they continue to follow the standards, every two years, they are recertified. The significance of this program is a couple-fold. First of all, if a business becomes green, if you will, they are listed in a free guide that is both on the ABAG website and also is a guide that is published throughout the Bay Area today. 10 years into the program, there are almost 1,000 businesses that are certified green. Staff believes that this is a great program on a couple of levels. Not only does it plug into our climate change project, but also it plugs into our economic development plan that Mayor Davis talked about earlier. You will probably know that if, when you go through that program, you'll note one of the things that polled very high in our community was many of our residents want to see more green businesses, and staff believes this is a great way to take existing businesses, get them to conform or agree to green practices, and become green, if you will. And we believe that it'll be a lot faster for us to basically certify some of our existing businesses rather than recruiting new businesses, although obviously, we'd like to do that as well. So, with that, that's a quick overview of what we're doing. Tonight, we'd like to, in addition to give you that update, get any feedback you'd like on this proposal, and also, if you're interested in hearing from the folks at San Carlos Green or other members of the audience on this, we'd be happy to do that as well.
Any questions for Brian while he was up? Brian, it was a wonderful report.
Thank you.
We do have members in the audience, with San Carlos Green. This is a group that came out of a task force that was called to gather a couple of years ago. Pat Bell and Martin Desmond are working with the Integrated Pest Management, Urban Tree Canopy Concept, the Water and Energy Conservation, Green Buildings, is Suzanne Emerson. Energy Conservation Task Force Communications is Anne Iverson. Climate Change is Suzanne Anderson and Anne Iverson. And Waste Reduction and Recycling is Pat Parler. So, ladies, would you like to say anything on behalf of San Carlos Green? I think Brian has said it quite well. Yes, Pat? Do you want to come up there?
I took off my badge because I am not speaking for San Carlos Green, but as an individual citizen, I would urge you to support the mayor's letter for the Kyoto Treaty, whatever the name of that thing is. You know what I'm talking about. I know that the city hasn't studied how much it's going to cost and how they're going to get there and whatever, but it's one of those things that just has to be done. You know, you have to make the commitment to do it. And most of you are too young to remember, but John Kennedy said, "We're going to the moon in 10 years." We went to the moon in 10 years. There's something to be said for that, to say, yes, we're on board, and it has to be done, and we're going to do it, and we'll figure out how we're going to get there. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
And Brian did do a good job with San Carlos.
And I will mention again, at San Carlos Green, we'll have a booth at Hometown Days. They have a couple hundred energy-efficient bulbs, fluorescent bulbs to give a light. They have water conservation devices. They have a lot of literature. They're looking for volunteers to add to their group, so if anyone in the audience and at home would like to be a part of this group, please come by, chat with them, and we'd love to have you sign up. So, we'll look forward to that over the weekend. Any other questions for staff or members of Green?
I have one question.
Yes.
In the staff report, it is recommending that we start a climate change program for the city of San Carlos. Is that the recommended name?
There are variations on the theme. I was calling it climate change. I noticed Joint Venture is now calling it, and there's climate protection. I don't have a strong recommendation to you on which name you prefer. It's up to council.
I'd like to discuss that when we get to it.
Okay. Do you want to pick that up now, or?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, the reason I would suggest that we change it to something other than climate change, I think we'd be better off with something, you know, Green San Carlos Program or Family Environment Program or something of that sort. Personally, I'm not convinced that the activities of man and carbon emissions and so forth is affecting our environment the way we're told it is. I believe the climate change that occurs, occurs because of the activity of the solar sys, of the sun, and I've seen quite a few documentaries on that that show the flipside of this whole argument about climate change and... argument about climate change and what we're doing. And just as an example, I've seen graphs that show that when, right after World War II, when we upped our production and carbon emissions, the temperatures were actually going down. And when we went into a recession in the 70s, and the whole world really went into a recession because the world tends to follow our economy, the temperatures were going up. I've seen other documentaries that show sunspot activity, and that there's actually an eight-year lag between the change in climate and sunspot activity, and that's because what's occurring is the heating up of the oceans, that the oceans are 90% of our planet, takes a lot of time for them to heat up, and so that's why you get the lag. And the carbon activity is, again, attributed much to the oceans because, again, the oceans are so large and contain so much biomatter and life and so forth. So suffice to say, I'm not convinced that we should be tying this to climate change. I'd also add this. I come from an area of Ohio where the Cuyahoga River Valley, where when I was a kid, you could almost walk on the Cuyahoga River because it was so polluted. And we had huge problems with the smell of factories that made rubber tires for Goodyear and so forth. It was a terrible place to live, in the summer times especially, when you had all these problems. And now, that same river valley, Cuyahoga River Valley, is cleaned up. It's a federal park. The home I lived in is gone because the federal government bought most of the land, torn down the houses, and put it in a park. And in 30 years' time, there's been huge changes in that part of Ohio. The reason I point that out is, you know, I'm one of the first ones to be sensitive to the environment, keeping things clean. I see the value of quality of life and so forth. I'm not against this program, per se, but I do, I see things in here that I don't think we need to be spending money on. And again, in terms of the name of it, I think we ought to properly name it something that gets to the point, which is, you know, being friendly to the environment and green quality, if you will.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'll just chime in. You know, I agree with about 95% of what Matt says. I don't necessarily have enough information to prove or disprove the comments about climate change and the emissions and their effect on our climate. However, I do wholeheartedly believe in the fact that we really need to, as a city, be setting an example for not only our residents, but our businesses and the community as well with respect to green construction and green energy use, and looking at renewable energy sources as a way to offset some of the things that we've done in terms of relying on non-renewable energy sources. So I agree with Matt that, you know, I don't know that this climate change really ought to be the focus. I think strategically, with the council, need to think of it more as really setting example and putting in place programs to inform residences and businesses about the opportunities for green construction, supporting that like we did at our last year's budget with the endorsement of the removal of permit fees for solar projects and things like that, because we do want to encourage those things that I think are beneficial to us as a community and to us as a nation, in fact. So I would definitely recommend that we approve staff's recommendations and proposal for the program, what we call it. I think, I don't have any particular name in mind, but I'd almost put that out to the, to staff as well as a task force to come up with something that they should call it. I don't think any of us have the right name up here right now, but whether we call it San Carlos Initiatives for, you know, Friendly Environments or Keeping San Carlos Green, that type of thing, I certainly endorse this program.
Thank you. I think that as Brian moves into this further, and as San Carlos Green develops their community focus, the intent is that eventually, there will be a presentation to us as to what we should be doing, or where we put our muscle, and where we encourage the community to go forward. I think we've done a significant good start in bringing all this stuff together, and as you know, there's a lot out there that's happening in this department, so there's a lot to pick from. But it is all very valid and can focus our attention. So as we go on, we'll wind it down into, in more of a to-do list, and resumet that back to the council for review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Just a minute.
I just wanted to say, just to pull back to about 20,000 feet on this, I can't tell you how happy I am that staff, and council, and communities coming together on something that I think is vitally important, that not everywhere in the country do we see this sort of perspective and forward-thinking, and although I think there's always, whenever you're on sort of the cutting edge of some of these different sciences, there's always going to be argument about different aspects of this. But again, just to take a broad overview, I'm so happy to see there be sort of concert of opinion that we become sort of more, better citizens of the earth, if you will, and be environmentally conscious together. And I just want to say, I appreciate everybody's support of these general principles, and staff reporting together, and council support, and incredible community support for this.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes, I just had a question. I assume from what you said earlier, that this will be coming back to us, and I was wondering about these, in the staff report, it does talk about fiscal implications and when we might be making a decision on that. Well, would that be when we look at the budget and finalize the budget?
I think that's correct, as in Brian, we do have in the budget, some allocation funds already.
Correct. In the budget, as it's, the original budget request was for $35,600. At the current moment, there's $30,000. And last week, when we talked to you, I asked that there be some flexibility in terms of what we use the $30,000 for. My sense is, is that at this point, probably what we want to do is participate in the group activity about the inventory, because obviously, if we go it alone, we're looking at $25,000. If we participate as the group, probably more like $14,000. So I'd like to get in on that low cost. And I guess to comment briefly on one of the earlier speakers, she is correct. One of the reasons that I did not recommend at this point that you move ahead with the Kyoto letter is because I think until we do that inventory, and until you know what the costs are, it seems to me to be a little early to sign up for something that you don't know what it's going to cost you. But I think once we have the inventory, and once we start down this road, we can come back to you in a few months, and you can have another look at that letter, and if you decide at that point you're ready to go, that would be fine or not. That's up to you. I also think that we do need to be cognizant of the fact that beyond the issue of the Kyoto letter, there is a pretty high possibility the state's going to mandate this on us, and so I want to be proactive on this and begin to start the work now.
One question. The current status of AB, what is it, 34?
AB 32 is...
32, excuse me. Is that it does not apply to San Carlos because we do not have our own utility and so forth?
That's correct. Right now, the only cities that are covered, is my understanding of AB 32, are cities with electrical and water utilities. However...
City Palo Alto, for instance.
City Palo Alto, City of Santa Clara, City Redwood City, et cetera. However, for, there is legislation that would broaden it for everybody. And my thought is, while there's an opportunity to save a lot of money on that inventory, we ought to jump on that, just in case we need it later.
Thank you, Brian. We have one across the street.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. San Carlos Belmont Sierra Club, and Roma Preated Chapter, Sierra Club. I don't quite understand Brian's reference to worrying about the money that it would cost before you sign the letter. The letter is, states that we will strive to meet or exceed Kyoto Protocol targets for reducing global warming pollution by taking actions in our own operations and communities, such as. It doesn't say we promise to do, and such as are examples. So if you read it carefully, I don't see where there's a budget item in there. This is merely a way to put pressure on the state and federal government in Sections A and B of the Protection Agreement. And then C, it's a way to show that you are part of the advance that's going forward to save our region locally, because we have to do something locally, and we have to work in concert with other cities around us, because it's not, you don't do things in isolation. You have to be cooperative. And I think it would really be a forward-looking thing to do, is to sign the agreement. And, you know, it's a matter of principle at this point. It did cost you money when you very kindly did reduce the fees for solar panels. We really appreciated that, and the citizens in the future appreciate it. And I'd hate to think that San Carlos was dragging its heels, and maybe you'll find in a year or two, and all the cities around us are going ahead. And I really urge you to think about it, because it's a matter of saying, "We're in agreement. We have to do something." And Matt, if the climate change bothers you, you could call it energy efficiency. I mean, you know, that's really what we're heading for, is, there's a lot of things in this, and one of them is trying to find out a way to energize our community and not have it cost as much, and save the environment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I think the, I think the issue there is, is not whether or not we sign the mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, it's the urging, and I would say the implicit agreement, that we will somehow get to a level of 7% below the 1990 level. And we don't have a clue what the 1990 level was, let alone what 7% of that would be. So granted, we could go ahead and sign this, but it's, it's an issue that we don't really understand. We don't know what it means, we don't know how it can be budgeted. We're just saying we're going to do it. I think our better position is to understand where we're going with it, and how we're going to get there, and then sign an agreement that has some muscle behind it, and ability to get where we want to go. I think a lot of folks who have signed this, and I applaud them for doing that and stepping up, but they don't, at this point, perhaps have a clue of where to go next. I think our issue is that we want to know where we're going to go next, and therefore, we'd like to know where that next is.
Yeah, let me make a couple of comments, Mayor. First of all, I, and again, I don't mean to be argumentative with some of the speakers on this point, but if you did see one of our earlier slides, it points out 25% of the cities in the area have signed, 75% have not. One of the cities in this area signed it, but then changed the agreement to say they were going to go back to the 2000 level, not the 1990 level. Again, I think we would be well-served to first calculate what that is, and then bring this back to you in a few months, and then hopefully, we would have some numbers for you on what we think that would cost. I think another comment I would make there was a comment about working with the other cities. We're clearly doing that. We are part of the joint venture effort, and as I said earlier, there were 50 people at that meeting last week. Pretty much every, well, maybe not every, almost every city and county in Silicon Valley was there. And I can also tell you that I'm on the steering committee for the entire effort, for the entire region. So we are very involved, maybe more involved than most. So we're definitely working with our neighbors. And I think that a lot of the cities last week, when we talked with them, I think are having the same experience that we are, and that is, namely, as you saw from that laundry list earlier, of people who are trying to work and lead in the space, I think in some respects are almost overwhelmed with how much help we're getting. And I think a lot of the work that I think joint venture is going to help us with is kind of sort through all the many different initiatives. One of the interesting discussions we had last week, for example, was in talking about the so-called LEED standards, which are the top 10% of energy saving for buildings. And there was a lot of discussion about what about the businesses who are pursuing green buildings but perhaps aren't meeting the LEED standard, they're sort of the other 90%. And so one of the things that we're talking to the environmental community about, for example, is something we're calling the Road to LEED, for lack of a better term, the idea that we could create a series of green standards that lead, so to speak, towards that goal. Because what we want to do is encourage more businesses to participate in this, not to limit it to an elite few. The idea is to, again, get many people to participate in these activities, very similar to what we're doing with the Green Business Program. We want to see a lot of people play, even if not everybody is at that top 5 or 10%. So that's part of the philosophy here, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any...
Just to the chat, Brian, just to clarify again, in terms of timing, if we choose to delay signing of the letter this evening, what's your expectation in terms of schedule for when staff's going to be able to come back to us and give us some of this quantitative data that we might be able to incorporate?
What I would suggest on the letter is that we first work with the other cities to see if we can't put together this pool to do the inventory, because many of them, I think, are in the same boat we are. They're reluctant to sign the letter till they know what it means. And I think that once we sign up with the cities, do the inventory, then we can come back to you, you know, later in the year perhaps, with a report on what exactly it means and what it would cost. But again, I think this is, in many respects, a comfort-level issue for the council. If you're willing to sign the letter, and we have attached it to your report tonight, so you have the actual text, you can certainly sign it, but from the staff perspective, it hits us as it's a bit of a blank check at the moment, since we don't know what the 1990 levels are or today's levels are.
Just to clarify, my question was specifically timing. So I'm going to hold your feet to the fire and say, is it three months? Is it six months? Is it a year? And...
I'm guessing it's probably more in the six-to-nine-month range, only because the next meeting of the Joint Venture Task Force won't be until July. Most people are still working on their budgets. And assuming we could get a commitment of a number of cities to do this as a team, I assume it's going to take the folks at ICLI and Sustainable Silicon Valley a few months to actually do these inventories for us. So I'm thinking later '07.
So if we were to ask you to perhaps come back and have a target of six months, do you think that would be reasonable?
I think that's fine, and certainly, in six months, we'll have things to report to you on other elements of this as well.
Question for a city attorney. Is there any obligation? The way I read this, there is no specific local obligation. It's, the way I read it is, we're urging the federal government to come up with plans and programs. One of those programs might be a funding program to reach these levels. I don't see, I just worry that we're being a little bit too conservative, and when I read through all the, 1 through 12, it feels to me that they're entirely consistent with their direction, we're already moving in, in almost every one of these directions. So I guess my specific question is, what is the obligation, other than, you know, what I read? Is there a specific obligation in the city?
Well, it's completely a voluntary program. Right now, it's not mandated by the state or federal government, and some cities are, it certainly seems like there's a movement underway. I mean, you can't, I don't think any of us can ignore that. But there's no obligation to adopt and sign, let's say, sign, for example, the letter that's before you right now. There are some items in here that may or may not be consistent with our present general plan, and you don't exactly know the cost of some of the items, so...
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is that there's not a, I don't think there's a commitment to any one item.
No.
It's a commitment to a general plan. And so for, just for my money, I don't believe we're making a commitment that really, that there's any exposure to, other than things that we're already working towards. I would just say, from the council perspective, this is just my opinion.
Andy. I know. Yeah. From, go ahead. Sorry. Well, I'll just read Item C, which is the, one that I saw when I looked at this earlier, was, "We will strive to meet or exceed the Kyoto Protocol targets for reducing global warming by taking actions in our own operations and communities, such as..." I mean, it's a policy statement, if you will.
Sure.
And I guess I see also, which could also have ramifications for us in terms of environmental documents that we've recently reviewed and may review in the near future. There are implications.
So you think that there's some exposure there?
Might be.
Brad, I kind of appreciate where you're going with this, because I was thinking the same thing. You know, if there's, if there's not too much teeth, if it's really more just adding our voice to voices of other cities that would be encouraging our local, or our state and federal governments to sort of do the right thing and pass legislation that would be supportive of this, I tend to be in agreement. However, I also believe that we should go in sort of with eyes wide open, knowing what the cost may be. I don't, I would hate to see San Carlos on the front page of the newspaper, or, you know, a community outcry in a year from now, when we make choices from a budgetary standpoint, or if future council makes choices, that may pass over some initiatives that... council makes choices, that may pass over some initiatives that could have endorsed sort of a green type of thing in favor of some other programs that would endorse city, you know, that benefit the community more. So I think I would like just to understand what those costs are, what those numbers are. And if it's not, if the delay's not too long, which was kind of my question to Brian, I would like to just take a little bit of time to get a little bit more information. But I do, I mean, I do support the program.
Yeah, if I may just respond, I'm comfortable that there's not mandatory language. I'm comfortable that we are striving, and I'm comfortable, so just from my own point of view, I'd be comfortable signing the agreement, given what it is and where I think we're all headed, as we've all demonstrated. Thank you.
Matt? I would stand strongly opposed to signing the Kyoto Agreement for two reasons. One is, as staff has indicated, we could be signing ourselves onto something in the dark. When I was mayor, I was asked to sign it, and I did bring it to staff to bring to council with the advice, from my standpoint as mayor, that we not sign it for that very reason. And also for the reason I stated about what we call this program. I don't buy the argument that the activity of industrialized nations, the United States being the predominant one, although China is closely nipping at our heels, as is India, that we're responsible for climate change. And so long as I hold to that, I will not sign, I would not be willing to endorse the signing of a letter that the presupposition of that letter is these activities are causing climate change. I don't believe it's so. Now that said, again, I don't mind looking at things in an honest fashion and saying, you know, if you do X, Y, Z, it'll improve quality of life. I can tell you as a cyclist, I really appreciate it when I pull up behind a car and I'm not eating, you know, the exhaust from a 1972 Chevy van. That's quality of life. I appreciate that. But, so for those reasons, I would go ahead with these, you know, some of these things that are being endorsed. And we did, you know, when I served as mayor, we did some of these things that the city did to improve quality of life and improve the environment and be sensitive to the environment. But let's be honest about it.
I personally think rather better and stronger review than if we take a little time to know what we're doing and what we're doing with it. I see the outcome of this as being a concrete list of things that we can do. There's a list here of 13 things that they'd like us to strive to do. Well, that's fine, but I think that since we haven't jumped on the bandwagon from the go-down, and since we are taking a closer look, I'd like to see it through and really understand where we're going. I think the intent is there, I think everyone understands we're going to be there. It's just that we go up there with an open eye and understand what's happening. So unless anyone would like to make a motion to approve the agreement as written, we will move on.
Just, is there support to give staff direction to come back within this month period, just to kind of keep it on calendar?
That would be the next step. So I don't hear a motion to accept the agreement as it's written, therefore, we go back to the staff recommendation that we accept the report, and we ask them to continue their program, we ask them to consider the naming of such a program, and we ask them also to get back to us in terms of what kind of agreement eventually we might have and how we might make it work positively for the city. Would that be acceptable?
I'd like to just strengthen it a little bit. I mean, I'd like to see them basically either commit to getting back to us within six months with what the number should be, just in terms of moving this forward, or coming back to us with a more clear schedule of what time it is going to take based on their conversations with other local jurisdictions. So that would be my only modification. I would like to see this not just sort of hang out there ad nauseam, because I do think it is of value, and I would like to see it move forward sooner rather than later. But if staff seems to think six-month timeframe is a realistic timeframe, I'd like to push them for that.
Yeah, and I guess through the chair, I think at a minimum, in six months, we'll have a lot more to report to you on this whole area, and indeed, probably even earlier than six months. But I think that suggestion is merited, yeah.
So I think in the move that we accept the report with a bit of modification, which we all understand.
Yes, I do.
Is there a second? Do you have a second? And I think we do a roll call on this, or would you like to have a roll call or a motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, we're moving ahead on the agenda item. We're going back to item 8A, which is consideration of adopting a resolution amending the City of San Carlos cost of services schedule, otherwise known as user fees.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Congratulations on taking another step in an important issue. That's nice to see the council and staff and the community all coming together on a program like that. And I hate to be the one to throw the wet blade hand on the evening, but we've got one of those routine annual maintenance issues for you this evening in the form of user fee increases that are being recommended. This evening, staff is recommending that the council adopt the attached resolution to update the city's cost of services schedule as proposed in attachments A and B of the staff report. These annual increases are expected to raise an additional $100,000 per year in fee-based revenue, based on current activity levels in the city. The $100,000 in fees that would be increased have been built into the proposed budget that we discussed at last week's council budget study session. If adopted, the fee schedule would take effect on July 15th. Development-related fees require 60-day notice in accordance with California Government Code, Section 66017. In developing the proposed fees, staff uses a user-fee and cost allocation model to blend direct and indirect costs of providing fee-related services. We believe that this approach is more reliable and more accurate. We work closely. As the administrative services department, we're really just the coordinator of most of the fees. We're working closely with the departments who are reviewing the individual proposed fees. In 2005, council may recall, you approved a contract with Muni Financial to do a legally defensible cost allocation plan and user fee study. For the last couple of years, we've been basing our increases on trying to get to that full 100% cost recovery level when we think it makes sense. We include a comprehensive review of the total costs to provide the services. We also look at the market study. If you take a look at the attachments, you'll see some comparable agencies. It's very difficult to get accurate comparisons in all categories, because the fee types and how they're categorized in every city seems to be, for the most part, very different. More commonality in planning and building than some of the other softer fee areas. But we include that data to the best of our ability, so you have something to take a look at when you're analyzing and comparing that data. One of the changes in this fee schedule is a general plan surcharge fee to recover costs of the general plan update over a five-year period. Council, I believe, is well aware of that. Surcharge's been discussed numerous times in accordance with the discussions of the general plan, but that would raise approximately $200,000 to $400,000 over five years to reimburse the city for the cost of the general plan update. Building permits and planning and engineering fees are based on a tiered project value scale and reflects direct labor and overhead costs incurred. This method, as I mentioned earlier, in the engineering, planning, and building arena is very similar to what you see in other cities. Many of the proposed fees, again, are based on the Muni financial study. Some of the fees in the proposed schedule are going up approximately 4%. A lot of those are based on existing contracts or regulated through state or other local agencies in terms of the increases that can take effect every year. The Muni financial study conducted in 2005 cost the city approximately $70,000. Over the last few years, we've been basing our analysis on that study. We think in fiscal year '09, about a year or so from now, we're going to need to put money into that budget to update that study and take another look at it. As we continue to have costs rise in certain areas and others, we've also made some cutbacks in some areas that would have an impact, and we'd like to study and know the impact of those, and we've done a lot of reorganization that we'd like to take into account. There are numerous city staff, I saw the building official here earlier, I'm not sure if he's here now. I know the community development director's here, city manager, assistant city manager, would be happy to try and answer any of your questions related to any specific fees. Oh, and on a final note, just tying into the environmental report you just had, the PV photovoltaic fees are still $0 in the fee schedule per council director.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeff before we open the public hearing?
I just had actually a quick question with respect to the general plan fees that are somehow incorporated into these fees. Do you, are they just sort of across the board, laid as a small percentage across the board, or are they specifically geared towards planning and building? Or perhaps you can...
Yeah, I believe they're all geared towards planning, building, engineering, the development-related fees. And if you look on the schedules, there's a column, general plan surcharge is the fourth column from the left.
Oh, got it, okay. And then the other question is, do we have an estimate on how much the total cost of the general plan update is going to cost? I know you, staff report has said roughly $400,000 would be raised by these fees. Do we feel comfortable that that indeed is going to be covered in this surcharge over a period of the five years?
This is the first time we're doing this, so I wouldn't say we're totally comfortable. I think this will be our first try. It's our best estimate right now. I think the general plan update is still an estimate at this point, as it hasn't gone out to bid yet and the work hasn't begun. So we may, next year, we may be adjusting that column as we recoup the costs over five years, and maybe we'd have to go out on a longer timeframe. Our last general plan, I think, we've had in place for over 10, so there likely would be time before the next general plan to recoup the full cost.
Okay. So the chair, are we taking, I just have one specific question about one particular line item. My question actually has to do with, I noticed under, in the build, sorry, planning fees, sort of middle on the second page down, our use permit through a zoning administrator, the fee, proposed fee is only $2,009. Our full cost is about $5,100. And yet, right below that, getting a use permit through our planning commission is actually $1,000 higher at a cost, or proposed fee of $3,044, and yet, our cost is lower. So can you explain to me why a use permit through a zoning administrator is so much less than getting a use permit through a planning commission and the actual typical public review process?
I guess speaking as the zoning administrator for San Carlos, typically when a development application comes to us and it's at that level, it's pretty pro forma. You know, the staff recommends it, we send out a notice within so many feet, and unless somebody objects, it gets approved pretty rapidly. Whereas if something's going to the planning commission, you're then into the full planning review process. You know, Mr. Survey might want to comment further, but I'd say those two processes are pretty dramatically different.
So the full cost column, the figure of $5,121, then, is probably not accurate? Is that what you're, if it's much quicker and much faster and much easier, then I would start to question why the full cost allocated to it is $2,000 less than the planning commission review?
I'll take a look at that. I suspect we may be seeing just a data entry flip-flop there, because I can't imagine that the planning commission process would be less than the zoning administrative process either, having dealt with it a little bit myself.
I didn't think so either. Okay, so you'll check into that one?
That's a good catch, yeah.
The second one, the second question I had is, at our last council meeting in terms of agreeing directions to staff about the, we're calling it the receptions position, but it's the person who really sort of greets, and I kind of think of as in probably 60% to 75% of her time axes, sort of a planning and building traffic coordinator, if you will, making sure that people are helped, and the majority of the people, I imagine, are coming in with questions related to where do I go to get a permit, or where do I do this. I can't imagine we've actually had the time to sort of build her, build that into sort of these fees that were being proposed. What would be the timeframe for us to do that?
Well, I think this year, what I would propose is, you know, we would go more with a direct allocation approach for her time to various funds as we charge the city council's time out to various funds and other city employees. And then we'll probably do some kind of a, more of an internal transfer to capture some time from planning and building, which really would just be moving money around and not helping with the problem. But then we can go back and study it in next year's review. But it will have served the purpose that the council directed at the last meeting in terms of reducing the general fund impact of the position and spreading the cost in a direct allocation approach, and then next year, build it into the fee schedule.
So just from a staff's perspective, you're anticipating essentially coming back with a review and quite probably an increase in cost of service fees on an annual basis from now until whenever?
Correct.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Jeff? Matt?
Go ahead.
Bob?
Just a point of information, the percent fee change doesn't take into effect, or doesn't take into account the general plan surcharge, does it?
No.
Okay. So if you added that to it, the percent fee change in some of these would be fairly substantial relative to, they may say 4%, but it would be, it could be a lot higher than that.
Yeah, correct. I mean, the general plan fee is really sort of a cost reimbursement fee, as opposed to just the traditional fee that we've had in place.
I just wanted to make sure that the rest, I'm sure the rest of the council knew that, but I thought I'd bring that up to make sure everybody did.
You're correct. Thank you.
Matt? I had a couple of questions that would be on page, let's see, well, it's under electrical permits.
So that's the attachment B?
Yes, yes, attachment B.
A building.
And there is a reduction of the service change exceeding 400 amps. It's dropping down from 170 to, looks like 18.
It's going to zero, actually.
Oh, it's going to zero. Okay, we're deleting the category. I guess nobody does this, huh?
Correct, yeah. I think it's, I think based on the building official was getting absorbed someplace else.
All right. And then down a little further, there is the addition to residential building, energy calc review fees. Do I see that correct, of the proposed fee of $158?
Correct.
And the full cost of 68?
Yeah, and some of these, as we look at, like I said, these are a few years old now. And so some of them, because we're working with the departments very closely, and some of it because we're wrapping up some other categories that are having an effect on how the fees are charged. My understanding was that was one of the ones, there's just a few in here where we're actually proposing higher than what's in the survey, and that's, and those are for some very specific reasons related to how, what the fee is and how it's being collected.
For the knowledge of the council, when I use my consultant to get this done, the work done, the initial work done, it's about $300. It really points out to me that, I don't know, I feel like that's a little high. It's not a lot of money, but when the fee to the city is half of what the fee is that my consultant charges my client to get the work done initially, something's askew. Those things are pretty mundane, pretty straightforward. You know exactly where to look for what it is you're looking for. You can, I would think you could breach through those things pretty quickly when you're doing plan review, but we...
Maybe a question of definition as well, because if you look across the line, other cities do as I presume with the building permit, which could make it much higher than $158.
I wouldn't want to be responsible for that in those cities.
I would actually be much more in favor of doing it in the same way. And the reason being, I think that what ends up happening is in trying to equalize or normalize across multiple different types of permits, both residential as well as commercial, I think that what's ending up happening is the complexity and the difficulty in the energy calculations for a commercial type of use are much more, probably much more complex than a residential. And so what's happening, I believe, is you probably have a couple of more complex ones, and they're skewing up the less complex residential ones. So in this case, you know, I would actually be a proponent of moving it over to the building permit valuation, and in that area, sort of looking at it separately that way.
That would be a pretty high number, because... That would be a pretty high number, because, you know, when you bring things in for plan check review, those fees run $2,000, $3,000, $4,000, just for your, your plan check fee.
For residential or commercial?
Well, I'm thinking of a residential project.
I think there's probably...
At 10%, that would be, how much would that be?
One hundred dollars a thousand?
I may not necessarily agree with the percentages.
Hundred dollars a thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I may not necessarily agree with the percentages that are competitive.
Yeah, I can agree with the concept, yeah.
But I agree with the concept, because I, you know, I think that there's probably, just from my own experience being out now doing some construction, there's a much higher tolerance for permits and fees and costs associated with that in the commercial sector than there are in the residential sector. And I think, you know, I constantly try to balance wanting our, the residential folks to get permits as well as the commercial folks, so you don't want to sort of price it so that it becomes prohibitively expensive for them to do the things that we would, from a health and safety standpoint, want them to do, like we talked about, you know, water heaters, I think it was, last year. We dropped those down because they were getting exorbitant, it seemed like, if you just wanted to change it, so...
And then I have one more question on the fee I did not see on the schedule, and that is, and maybe it's because it's covered by ordinance, is the appeal of decision in the planning stage. And we, through this last year, last 18 months, have gotten a number of letters from folks who felt like the appeal cost was too high, and it prohibits folks from going forward with an appeal.
Well, I wish I could tell you why it's not on the schedule, but I can tell you it's not going up if it's not on the schedule, so...
They were asking for it to come down.
Right.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, city council and planning commission, right on page one.
Attachment A.
Okay, so they are on the schedule on attachment A, first, is that the first page of attachment A?
Yeah, that's the first page.
Yeah, it's actually like the...
At the top, and they're not, they're not changing very much. 4% with a $57 surcharge on them.
Uh-huh. Okay, appeals to planning commission and then appeals to city council? Is that what it's going on? I got you, okay.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
From the legal standpoint, every appeal we have is a hearing de novo. So it's, it's starting all over again. It's not as if it's really an appeal, you're just doing it all over again, so it's double a cost. You're really not even covering the cost.
Not, all right.
Momentary cost.
Well, we can go back to your previous question. The building official walked in, and he is pointing out that he thinks your addition to residential building should be 58, not 158?
Oh, that's helpful, okay.
Yeah, so we've got a winner there.
That was attachment B, I'll find it.
Yeah, attachment B.
That was a typo?
Apparently, and he thinks that the new residential structure per unit down below that should be 158.
Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Or per the comment, which is 10% on base building per unit with a $15.80 minimum, is that correct?
If I could, the, the cost for energy plan check for the residential building, they're all lumped together, so the cost that you pay for a single-family home is the same as that building across the street.
Where's my sense of correction?
Across the street. So that's why you see the $15.80 per unit, because if we were to charge the $158 or the, I'm sorry, the 158 per unit, we'd probably bankrupt the developer. So it's, we do have to check several different elevations and which, which way they face because of, because of the sun reacting to the windows and all of that. But, so the base building is the same for a single-family and a multiple apartment building or a condo, we pick up the additional plan check cost through the numbers of units.
What's your feeling, Jack, about a percentage versus a dollar amount?
We're surely going to come out way ahead on it. I surely, I think that's a council decision, but it's, it's, we're going to, we're going to end up with a lot more funds at our disposal than the hours put into that kind of a check.
And you feel that what the way we're doing it now on a dollar, dollar per unit or, or sole basis isn't appropriate?
I was lucky enough to look at two apartments or condominiums that we've built and, or we've inspected the last couple of years, including the one across the street and a little four-plex up the street, and looking at the time and the energy involved, primarily the time. To plan check the entity, energy portions of that is what made us arrive at these particular fees, and they sort of fit our time put into the, into the checks fairly well.
Any other questions for Jeff?
So, just to be clear, the figure should be, addition to residential building would be $58, and then new residential structure per unit is...
Per building is 158.
158.
And that could be a single-family 3,000 square foot building, it could be a 50,000 square foot condominium. We're going to check the shell once, then we're going to check individual units, and that's what drives up the cost for larger projects, makes it equivalent, we think.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Yes, I was, I know that we, I'm sorry, this is for Director Molti. We had talked about in the last budget meeting that credit card charges were sort of raising at a pretty alarming rate, based on what we're keeping up with. How exactly, and I think what we said was in the fee schedule, somehow we'll compensate for that. Is that applied across the board? Is that, I just, what's the philosophy on that? How are we doing that?
It's captured through the administrative overhead that becomes one component of how we study the fees. So we do factor that in, though it tends to run, you know, a year behind. So we happen to know about the credit card charges this year way in advance, so we did factor that in, and would continue to factor in all the known increases into the overhead when we're looking at the fees and making those kinds of adjustments. If we think that the, going back to the Muni financial study, that the logic in there didn't properly account for that kind of future increase built into the methodology, so...
So they are, it's factored into whichever one of, into these fees, basically?
Correct.
Into these numbers?
Yeah.
And one of the reasons for the increases?
Yeah.
And is there also parking rep fees that, are they on a separate schedule, or...
They are typically on a separate schedule, and I don't think we had any of those coming forward.
I just figured also that was another place for credit card.
Tonight, correct, and that would be one area where the next time they come forward, they'll get that factored in as part of their administrative overhead cost.
Great component, thank you.
Just actually, through the chairs, to follow on to that question. Do we have the ability to actually add on a credit card surcharge, if you will, so that we have a, what I would consider the cash at the pump price versus the charge it? And I'm seeing Brian Moore shaking his head saying no.
We tried that in the early days of credit cards, and that's specifically prohibited in the credit card agreement.
So the answer to that is no, even though you were shaking your head.
Well, what I was going to say is I'd take a look at that. I don't, I wouldn't have had an answer for you, but it sounded like Brian was pretty positive, so... But I'd be happy to update that if you'd like, to see if there's any changes taking place.
I guess, just as a councilwoman, I would be interested just in anecdotally, at some point, if you have access to the information, what percentage of people, or what dollar figure through building and planning actually are getting put onto credit cards?
Pretty high.
Massing his clients all charge.
I can't...
They like the mileage, I'm sure.
I don't get the day I went in the first time and could pay with credit card, like, yeah-hoo, so... It gets done a lot.
And just for the benefit of the public, this, this is a fairly large number of the credit card fees that are, that are being raised to the city, and a fairly, I mean, from my vantage point, somewhat significant reason why some of these have to be raised, because we're in the hole to a great degree on the credit card charges. Yeah, that's very true.
May I ask a question in that regard? I don't know if staff or members, but you know, back in the days when we did cash, do you think there might be a wash there in terms of handling cash, taking it down to the bank, and the staff time, and, you know, just dealing with that versus, and checks too, versus just, you know, doing things electronically? I don't know, I'm just asking for...
Yeah, I mean, I see where you're going with it, and, you know, it wouldn't be a wash, dollar for dollar, but if you were putting, you know, the time that staff saves and can devote to other activities based on the use of processing and accounting for credit card charges, I'd say it's much simpler to account for charges on the credit card than it was in the days when everything was handled on a cash basis, yes.
Okay, thanks. And somebody needs to turn off their strawberry, it's causing us problems.
Blackberry, blueberry? For the record, mine has been off this entire meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can I call a question on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to...
No, no, we can't do that.
It's a public hearing. And in fact, before we get to that, I actually was going to sort of lobby my fellow council members to raise the fees to the full cost in a couple of areas specifically within planning.
Why don't we have, why don't we call a public...
Can I have a comment first?
Let's call the public hearing first, and we can come back and do it on a motion. This is a public hearing, would anyone from the public like to speak? Is there a motion to...
I would move to close the public hearing.
Is there a public hearing? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, well, just let me preface it by the areas that I'm looking for increasing the proposed fees to cover more of the full cost, because I think these are the areas where I think both the market will bear, as well as, I just know that we're continually trying to not subsidize quite so much of our fees out of our general fund. So the first area would be, it's, and it's primarily all in, in the planning fees. The minor pre-zoning, four or fewer lots, I'm sorry?
Attachment that you...
Oh, yes, I'm on attachment A. All of this is on attachment A, first page, third and fourth line items down. The pre-zoning, the proposed fees are $6,000 and change, and $10,000 and change, and I'd like to see those raised to the $7,500 and the $11,800, just to, to cover the full cost. The next one is the zoning administrator determination. I don't know, again, if this is a typo, bottom of the page, about four lines up. We're proposing a fee of $536. According to this, our full cost is about $1,410. And again, it seems to me that by going through the zoning administrator, we're actually providing a service that cuts out sort of the normal public review process. And so, either the full cost is wrong, or I think that as a benefit, you know, we ought to be able to recover our full cost on that.
Okay, is this number three? Any other items?
I'm sorry?
Any other items?
And then on the second page, about 25% of the way down, the restrictive covenant, second dwelling and second dwelling exceptions, I'd like to see those raised just incrementally up to cover the full cost. And then also the, I'd like to get straight on this use permit through the zoning administrator versus through the planning commission, and I don't know what those costs are. And it's a bit frustrating, because we're being asked to adopt a revised fee schedule, and yet I don't know what the actual cost is, but intuitively it seems to me that the proposed fee for the zoning administrator ought to be higher than that of the planning commission. And while I don't see raising it all the way up to the $5,100, I would like to see it somewhere above the $3,000, and maybe in the neighborhood of around $4,000.
Okay, that's...
At the middle of the page.
Middle way on the, on the second page?
Yes, use permit through the zoning administrator.
You'd like to see that zoning administrator $4,000?
Yep.
Or the planning commission?
The zoning administrator with, oh, I guess I'd like to see the, well, again, I don't know what the actual cost is.
Well, we could, we can, assuming that those numbers are flipped. Can Al Sebey, community development director, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd just like to clarify that actually the planning commission costs are much more expensive than the zoning administrator costs, so I think that may be the fee that we would want to concentrate on. For instance, as Mr. Moore mentioned, when, when an item goes to the zoning administrator, it's a pretty quick determination that's made with not a lot of staff report, analysis, and writing. There's a short report. When it goes to the planning commission, there's much more detailed analysis, there's environmental determinations that are sometimes required, and also public hearing staff time, so the staff...
Oh, Al, no question about, I mean, absolutely, I just don't know what the, what the real cost is. And I think that from a council's perspective, we can base our fees based on getting, recouping our costs. And so we can't just arbitrarily say that we think, and pull a number out of a hat, it's $10,000 when our cost is actually only $5,000, for example. And so if our full cost for a planning commission, if that's a typo, and the full cost for a zoning administrator is, should be $3,044, and the planning commission should be $5,121, which I think is probably more along the lines of what it might be, then I would suggest that we leave the zoning administrator at the $2,000 and raise the use permit to, you know, like $4,000. But again, it's very difficult, sitting up here on the dais, to make that determination without cost.
It sounds as though we don't have complete information on those two items. Do you have any problem with the other five, Jeff or Al, in terms of increasing them to the full cost?
No. We can, we can just bring those two back individually.
Bring those two back, and you can explain what the actuals are, and we can go ahead and approve everything else?
Yeah. Another option might be to adopt them at 75% of whatever their total cost recovery is. That seems to be about the target you're aiming for, regardless of what dollar amount it's based on.
Well, maybe we ought to see the numbers, I think.
I mean, I don't know that it's 75% target, I don't know that it's 100%.
We'd be going on 100%.
Yeah, exactly, mine goes more, closer to 100%.
One thought would be to adopt the fees as they're, you know, make the changes that we feel comfortable with the numbers and the data. On those areas that we think that a higher fee might be justified, if we go back to the report and verify that this number here is inaccurate, we can bring those back. We're suggesting that you adopt the fees in their entirety, because it sounds as though the only thing that you would be talking about would be increasing those fees potentially, if we're able to justify that based upon what the report might say. So what we're suggesting is that if you feel comfortable with this, that you adopt this fee schedule as amended in those categories, and then we'll check the data and bring it back if need be, if we can justify it.
You know what, I would be comfortable with that, because I was just looking, and you look at historical, I have a hard time believing we didn't catch this last year when we reviewed the fee schedule at that point. So we do have increases over last year's fees that I think probably will cover, cover the cost.
You're okay with moving ahead, and we'll adjust the use permits on both sides if it's appropriate?
If staff deems it's...
Why don't you give us a report regardless? Can you do that? Just so we clarify where we are. Okay, then, I think we're ready for a motion.
Are there any other changes?
I just want to be clear, zoning administrator, the one that's at the bottom of the page, are you suggesting we go ahead with what staff recommends now, and if we want to change it later, we will?
That is correct. So my changes that I would recommend is that we increase the proposed fees to full cost in minor and major pre-zonings, and in restrictive covenant, second dwellings, second dwelling exceptions. And actually, I'm sorry, the other one was subdivision exceptions. And I would, that would be a motion, actually.
I'll second that.
Now, looking, I'm a little confused, and subdivision exception is showing more than full cost.
Subdivision exception is the one right above the, almost right above the use permit through the zoning administrator. We're proposing, staff's proposing $4,657.
$5,499.
Versus $5,499.
If I may, there was one more that you mentioned earlier, and that was the zoning administrator determination.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, the zoning administrator determination as well.
That's the one I'm, I would withdraw my second, or at least want to discuss that. I could keep the second there, but I, I think that one's worth looking at. I think if I understand that correctly, that's the alternative to going through the, I don't know what we call it now, it used to be called EDCC, but it's something other than that, is that correct?
No.
No?
My understanding, and Mr. Savay can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that that's a, that's a review of a project that doesn't need a use permit. It's along the lines of the other review, which I think was what Councilmember Tigaldori was going, if I can interpret the council.
So if I may ask, then, where's the fee covered for, you know, you come in and it's determined you don't need to go through the EDCC process? Again, I'm using historical terms, not the current ones, but, and you just have your project looked at by the... Oh, that's, that's, I, it's the planning administrator, not the zoning...
Yet.
Okay, fine, so my second holds, and I'm clear?
And I've modified my motion, so you've, your second is for the modified motion that Austin...
Modified motion, I'm okay with that.
Okay, perfect.
You have a motion and a second. Any other question? You have a roll call.
Councilmember Tiggledory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
This was a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Twenty-seven.
No, you just adopt the resolution.
Thank you.
Clerk will note it for the record. It was a resolution.
So, this motion did, right?
Right.
All right. We still move on. Okay, we're now at the consideration of a resolution encouraging Caltrain consideration of enhancements to transit service. Staff pulled together an excellent report with a lot of attachments as to what this issue is all about, and they presented to us a resolution that is a bit milder than the one originally proposed, and I think simply states our desire that Caltrain consider alternative schedules providing better balance between local and express. So, any... Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. Did you have anything else to say?
I think you stated it just perfectly.
All right. Any other questions for Mark?
Just clarification, because I know this is brought forward by Malcolm Dudley, who I'm assuming is doing it in the interest of Atherton that lost all of their stops. And so, this really is more sort of political support of Atherton's bid to get additional stops at their train station, or former train station. Is that what... I mean, if we kind of cut to the chase with this resolution?
I think maybe that accurately reflects how it started. There are a couple of other cities. There's an organization that has been formed that, affecting a couple of other cities, that have taken an interest in this. And meetings have been held between San Fran's staff now and this group to at least have a dialogue between the two entities with respect to the train service that's being provided. Certainly, there are some cities that lost more stops than the city of San Carlos did. They were making an effort to have that revisited. And I think one of the primary differences between the original resolution and that which we've revised, other than cleaning up some of the wherasses to be technically accurate, is the original resolution suggested that there be an independent third-party analysis of the train services that are being provided. We're suggesting, in the revised resolution, that there be dialogue, that it be studied, and that dialogue continue, but we're not pretending to tell Caltrain how to study it or who should study it, independent from them. I think that creates a whole another series of issues. So, from that standpoint, we think the revised resolution is acceptable. In all honesty, though, whether or not any resolution is absolutely needed, given the fact that the dialogue seems to be occurring at this juncture, is open to question.
My following question, that actually has to do with if indeed we did encourage Caltrain to open this up, and they did start listening, or did start reviewing this based on the... I use it, the squeaky wheel gets the grease kind of scenario, isn't it probable that San Carlos actually might end up losing stops out of this?
It's, you know, it's really impossible for me to tell. It would depend upon what the analysis might show, I presume. But now, you know, from what we've been able to discern, I don't think that there's much interest in moving away from the bullet... the baby bullet concept, which is what the drive... is the driving force between why the stops have been minimized. I mean, they're trying to create a service that will go nonstop from point A to point B to provide faster service in higher ridership areas. And every indication we've gotten is that there's every intention to maintain that service, because it's proven to increase revenue and increase ridership for Caltrain. Beyond that, though, to continually review the ridership schedules and determine how it might be improved is, I think, just inherently a good thing, something that we certainly would be open to.
Okay. And then, my final question is, since the date of the staff report, in your staff report, you basically... It sounded like one city had passed this resolution?
At the time, and I'm not aware of others that have acted upon it since then. I believe that the city of Belmont has approved a revised resolution, similar to what we're doing here, albeit I have not seen it.
I understood that Atherton and Burlingame had as well, but I'm not clear on that.
Thank you.
I believe that's correct.
And again, those are the two cities that have experienced a hundred percent reduction in stops. So, I guess, I mean, to my fellow council members, I would question whether or not San Carlos wants to get involved in this fight, or, you know, sort of get on one side of the fence or the other with respect to Caltrain and trying to influence what they're doing as it relates to other cities up and down the peninsula.
Well, I think it's fair to say we didn't want to get involved at the level that it was originally submitted, and the resolution is, which is in our packet. I don't see any problem with the resolution as proposed, which encourages parties to get together and reason out local versus express service. And to the extent that that helps communication process, perhaps that's good. Although, as Mark said, I think that process goes on now, and perhaps a resolution is not needed. I haven't been pressed for a resolution since my original discussion with Malcolm. And there's been some discussion at the council cities meetings, but it's pretty much within the group that is pushing hard on the original resolution. So, what's your pleasure? Do you want to send on a resolution, or shall we decline?
My recommendation would be to decline at this point in time. If it turns out that the dialogue stops happening or stops being effective with Caltrain, then I would suggest that we bring it back at that point, because I do certainly think that we need to send a message... Well, that Caltrain should know that we do value public transportation. But if the process is working, I don't know... Again, I don't want this to become sort of a political elephant in the grass, rather than actually it working for what makes sense, so...
I think, just to speak on the other side briefly, I think if there's a plus for it, it's putting Caltrain on notice, if you will, that we are interested in local service. We have expressed that interest in terms of the PAMP development as an example, how do we encourage more people to use the train, whether it's that development or others. So, it kind of puts us on a concern level without pushing too hard to get the... to tell them what they should be doing. That's not the only plus I see. Any others?
I see Councilmember Doherty's point. However, I also see the point of just putting on a little bit of heat, if you will, to keep the dialogue going, because I think some of the dialogue actually got going, because there are a lot of cities that have been involved in the grassroots effort, if you will, and meeting and so forth. And they have... The group has been able to say, you know, "Look, we've got Atherton here. We've got Burlingame here." Sure, they're the ones that lost stations, but Belmont's been attending the meetings. Mel Park's been attending the meetings, so forth. And so, that has been viewed by Caltrain staff, and they've responded to it. I think this just enhances it a little bit, formalizes it. So, with that, I would move that we do go ahead and... What is it we're being asked to do? Sign the...
It's been suggested by staff, yes.
Can I just ask a quick clarification? Does staff have any sense... I know that we've got the Caltrain land. The staff's been working with the members from Caltrain on the railroad land use area right there by the station. Will this have any bearing or any impact or negative impact on the relationship between Caltrain as it exists with Mr. Scanlon and all of them, and the city of San Carlos? Or would it be better to just sort of kind of lay low at this point and not take a position one way or the other, just in the interest of that development within San Carlos?
I certainly felt that way with the original resolution, and have had many conversations with Cal... or with San Fran staff subsequent to that. I've talked with them specifically to the point of the revised resolution. My sense of it is that at this juncture, that they would not take offense. I can't speak for them. I don't believe they're here in the audience tonight. But I have had conversation with them specific to the fact that I was going to bring forward a revised resolution, and I didn't pick up any real concern from the staff's standpoint with respect to doing this.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I would second the motion, and I just want to say, as long as we're pressing forward with transit-oriented development and housing, I mean, that seems to be something we talk about a lot, and talk about a concern of the county, as well as we've lost some stops over the last several years, and talk about there is that big PAMP project out there. We're trying to mitigate impact on city streets and so forth, should that move forward. In general, given what we're up to in economic development, it seems like we need a viable transit to keep the pressure on. So, I would say that...
So, we have a motion raised and seconded. Any other comments? If we can take a voice vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? All right. Moving forward to item 10B. We did 10B. 10A. Yes, I'm sorry. 10A.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the new joint powers authority for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department has a process in it where in major decisions, including approval of the budget, comes back to each city council for ratification, actually for action before the Fire Commission actually approves the document. In the spirit of that agreement, before you tonight is the proposed budget for the FY 2008 Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. The staff report tries to summarize some of the enhancements that are included within the departmental budget. That includes replacing some light vehicles, setting up a reserve for vehicle replacement, building a reserve for fleet replacement, and filling existing positions that are within the department but haven't necessarily been occupied in the previous years, based upon what was going on within the department. The budget as proposed is in the neighborhood of twelve point five million dollars, of which the fee that is paid by the city of San Carlos is five million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. We have shown you the draft budget for the city, assuming these numbers within it. The staff report also makes the point of indicating that the Fire Board made a concerted effort to keep the fire budget this year in this neighborhood, in an effort to ease the transition from the... towards the new formula. The manner in which that that was done included three areas that would suggest that another adjustment next year will probably be necessary in order to accommodate a full annualized expense that's anticipated within the Fire Department. So, the efforts in order to keep the budget low this year will help in the transition, will help us balance our budget this year. Next year, though, we will expect an additional cost if we expect to fund the Fire Department at the hundred percent level. With that, Fire Chief is in the audience to answer any questions specific to the budget that you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Mark or the chief?
I just had to, actually, two quick questions, and maybe the chief can help out, too. Just wanted to start by commending you on coming up with a balanced budget, and I did notice that there were quite a few cuts, and so, I appreciate you being prudent with the taxpayers' money. First question actually has to do with the revenue side of things. Noticed that the permit and plan check fees, both for San Carlos as well as for Belmont, dropped significantly from the 2007 estimated to even the 2008 proposed. In the case of San Carlos, we went from eighty-eight thousand in revenue down to fifty-five. Can you help?
The reason for that is that we used to do that on a two-year cycle, and at the request of the Fire Commission, we reduced that to a one-year billing cycle. So, instead of billing biannually every two years for that, now it's just done annually. So, it was... It changed the amount that came into the component, that comes into the Fire Department, based on true numbers. It was an expected number before, and then, based on what, as we did our research and looked at buildings, we actually should be putting the plan check... Is that for the plan check fee or the...
Well, I'm looking like... You had... You've gone from a fire plan check fee, 2005 was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, 2006 was fifty-seven thousand, so it's obviously coming down quite dramatically. Budgeted for 2007 was a hundred and fifty thousand, although it looks like estimates are coming in right around a hundred thousand.
That was... We actually had them combined last year. We broke them out.
And I see that breakout, but for the... If you lumped them apples to apples, the one fifty budget versus about a hundred and rough numbers, a hundred and five, a hundred and ten for estimated, assuming you've got the twenty-six thousand, I'm guessing is still Belmont, the twenty-three eight would be San Carlos, and then there's the sixty-five underneath that.
Correct.
So, that totals up to, I'm guessing, right around a hundred and ten thousand. I don't have my calculator.
Correct.
But that's what we're comparing against, the one fifty that was budgeted.
And that's when we were billing it for two years.
Right.
Worth... And so, one year they get a bill for two years' worth, and they wouldn't get an invoice for the following year. We did it on a two-year cycle.
Oh, I see. Okay. And so, next year's, the 2008, then, is sort of the... We'll have that, but on an annual basis.
Correct.
So, it's actually, instead of dropping from eighty-eight to fifty-five, it's actually going from eighty-eight, which would have been two years, to a hundred and ten, double to fifty-five.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. The next question I have is actually... I noticed in, well, 2005, 2006, and 2007, again, on, I guess, the revenue side on facilities, fourteen thousand dollars pretty much straight across the board for the last couple of years, and then it's dropped to two hundred dollars in 2008. About two-thirds of the page down.
The page is that that you're on?
I'm on page six.
Page three.
Under revenue and other sources, under the 2008 budget. It's fund number three-three-six, sort of the last line in, fund three-three-six.
Operating transfers.
Well, that's the interest on the earning investments or the transfer?
Through the chair. I think I can answer the question. If you look above that, that's a total, okay?
Oh, I see.
If you look above that, it's transfer from general fund. In past years, we transferred thirteen or fourteen thousand from the general fund, and that's not happening this year.
Correct.
Because we don't need that money.
Correct.
As a revenue. Okay.
The idea this year is that we'll, in the next fiscal years, as Mr. Weiss explained, that we'll have... There's funding in there for reserves, funding to do the vehicle replacement, and then to start doing a contingency fund for the department, which is what we didn't have in the past year. So, our anticipation is we won't need to come back and do a general fund transfer.
Right. And then, my very last question has to do with the hundred and ninety-eight thousand for the vehicle replacement. Is that intended to be actually appropriated in 2008, or is it intended to be the beginning of a vehicle replacement fund that, as vehicles come due, we're building up the balance of this fund so that...
Yeah, that actually is the payment on the area ladder and the replacement of three light vehicles.
So, it were intended that we'll get three new vehicles in the 2008 timeframe, bringing that fund balance back pretty much to zero?
No, there will actually be eighty-five thousand dollars left in that account at the end of the fiscal year, which will be the beginning of our building of a vehicle replacement account.
Wonderful.
And the idea being that to next year, that we will go out to bid for a new pumper, and because we won't take delivery of it until the next fiscal year, we'll go ahead and budget for that lease payment on that vehicle the following year.
So, is it your expectation that we'll actually continue to contribute to a vehicle replacement fund and bring that fund balance up to a certain amount that would be used as needed?
Yes. Yeah, our anticipation is, we reduced it this year by a hundred thousand at the request of the commission. Next year, our anticipation is it will have two hundred thousand that we'll be putting into the vehicle replacement account.
And we'll continue to...
And that will continue to go until we have enough to actually just pay cash for the vehicles, much like the city does, both agencies do now, both parent agencies.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mark? A couple of questions. One is, it mentions that we're expecting an increase from twenty-four to twenty-seven firefighters.
Correct.
Is that, given the number of engines and trucks and so forth we have, is that considered to be sort of fully staffed?
That will put us fully staffed based on the equipment we have. That will put us fully staffed based on the equipment we have. We'll actually go from, we've been at 24 for the last few years, but with the vacancies from disability and injuries, we had an agreement with the labor group that we would maintain the staffing at the 24 until we had the vacancies. Those people are off the books, so we go and replace them. That will put four people at Station 13 on the truck.
And I know we've had a lot of overtime in past years. Will this effectively reduce the overtime as well?
Well, this will be the first year, we're hoping that it'll be reduced. We kept it at the amount that it was in the past because we really don't know where we're going to be at in order, you know, our goal is to work on curtailing that cost.
But, but is that one of the goals, to reduce overtime? I know in my discussion with the firefighters, that was one of those, you know, driving issues for all of them and their families.
Yeah, we're trying really hard to, you know, get up to the full staffing so that we're, we don't have the injury replacement and the long-term vacancies that we've been incurring.
Great, and then we talked about another adjustment for next year. Do we have a sense for what that number might be? You know, just, we've, we've gone from a two-year budget cycle to a one-year budget cycle, and as we see increasing costs, you know, we're talking about different headcount in the budget right now that we may be, you know, trying to replace and so forth in other departments, and I'm just trying to sort of estimate if we, if we have known adjustments coming up after this year, we should consider that some of our budget decisions that we're making.
I mean, I think the Chief has presented objectives for the future that would either go towards cross-staffing or adding back the fifth company. Those are a wish list that I think multi-year the Chief would strive towards, but there certainly is no sense within this document that that will be required. There are some things that I've itemized in the report, though, that we can give you some sense for. The emergency coordinator position, if it's budgeted at 75 percent, there's probably the need for another $25,000 or $30,000 next year to put that at 100 percent. The cost recovery revenue for two years, if it's close to $200,000, then that will be cut in half, you know, so that may be a value of close to $100,000 for that. Because if we're only collecting for a one-year timeframe for that revenue instead of two years, then, then the next year you can only anticipate half of what is being projected in this particular budget. Now, that has a secondary effect as well, in that the city's formula, or the formula for the JPA is affected by that number. And so if trends stay the way that they are today, with the revenue coming in twice as high this year because of that past billing period this year, but next year if it's reduced in half, then given the disparity between where those revenues come from, the city's formula share may actually go up from the 52.48 that is currently represented in this document to, you know, 52.3 again. So that, that has a multiplier effect that, for the City of San Carlos, might require an additional contribution beyond the base $100,000. And the workers' comp, you know, if the rates stay as high as they have been, we got a last-minute increase of about $150,000 for workers' compensation, and the Board chose to use existing reserves in order to fund that rather than appropriating the additional $150,000 for that. So if you figure that 150, maybe 100 for fees plus another 20 or 30 for the position, you're looking at a couple hundred thousand, I would guess, $150,000 to $200,000 with the formulaic increase above and beyond that for the City of San Carlos. And beyond that, there would be the normal cost of living increases that are part of the MOU and part of any normal operating expense.
Gatsby 45.
Gatsby 45 might be an additional expense that will require to be budgeted for.
We don't know exactly what those are yet, but we do have the, this is the last year of fixed labor costs, so we do have MOU increases starting in the next fiscal year, in the '08, '09 fiscal year. So we're, we're stable that way for at least through this fiscal year.
I guess it's just important for us to try to get some sense for what that will be as we, you know, as we just went through the process with our overall budget, whether or not we should be considering that raising while we're making other adjustments to the budget, so, thank you very much.
If I may add, I'm glad Mr. Lewis questioned the overtime because that's what we looked at as, you know, it's a substantial cost. And so without wrestling with it at the moment, that we're looking at the budget, we asked the Chief to come back to us soon with looking at cross-staffing, what the additional employees would, would cost in order to run cross-staffing, but what effect that might have on pulling down on some of the overtime. But we definitely, I think there was, especially I gave a speech about the cost of overtime, and it was something that we targeted, or at least I did, because it was, it's a very big number. And there weren't many things that we could look at and say, hey, can we, can we cut this down some? Although Mr. Grisilli, that was his goal, definitely, and that's why this document didn't come out of our board meeting, our Fire Board meeting unscathed. It very much, you know, the message to the Chief was, we like it, but you definitely have to go back and make some changes, which he did, so.
Thank you, Bob?
No, I just, I think in the future, I think it's going to be a difficult balancing act, as our City Manager said, relative to the cost of the Fire Department. This is the last year of the fixed costs for our labor, so next year guaranteed it's going to go up a couple of 3 percent for sure, and that's our biggest number. You know, relative to the fact of overtime, I think overtime's a function, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, is you have to have somebody there all the time, and that's what we want to do, we want to fully staff. So as long as we're fully staffed, somebody's got to work it. And if some people are out on disability or people are out on vacation, that's where the difficulty has been in the last few years. We haven't had enough warm bodies to, you just can't, somebody has to work the shift. And if they work the shift, and it's more than their normal shifts, they get paid overtime. And I think that's the difficulty with this, the way the Fire Department runs, just like the Police Department runs, it's just, it's built into the system, it has to be, because you have to, like a regular business, you may or may not have to have an individual sitting at that desk. But at this business, so to speak, you have to have somebody there. And I think that, at least in my mind, that's what, what makes this, this overtime such a difficult issue to control. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but.
That's correct. And it, and part of it, too, is the costs, our purse costs are high, and, and the relationship between that and the overtime makes it almost a wash. If our purse costs were to get lower, which we anticipate in the future, then we look at other ways of, of dealing with that impact to the department. Maybe it's additional personnel, maybe it's, you know, more of a relief, relief kind of a piece that goes along with that. I think also, in along with this, we spent a lot, issue last year was the hazmat contract. We have renewed that contract with the county for three years, and we do have the costs for our future growth built into that, into that agreement with the county. So we will see not a fixed number in hazmat where we're, you know, supplementing that as we were in the past. We're, we're able to have that kind of run independently. We've also gone back to the JPA for the emergency services response, and we've gotten reinstated for the fourth company at Station 16. Now that it's, has a paramedic there every day, there was $47,000 a year. We were not recouping because we, we didn't have a paramedic up there all the time. Now that we've gotten the staffing levels back up, we've been able to go back and ask that, that Executive Committee for our, our share of that reimbursement. So we're going after everything we can get. The personnel have applied for a grant next year for, to replace the fire engine, so hopefully we won't have to do anything but a 20 percent share on that. And so we're constantly, much like the Police Department and every other department, we're, we're searching high and low to help supplement everything that we have.
All right, are we ready?
Just a real quick question through the Chair. Just, I wanted to follow up with the hazardous materials reimbursement. I noticed, I was having Christine do the math here, it's about a three and a half, a 3.2 percent increase.
Correct.
And that's basically a COLA increase?
That was a COLA increase for this year, based on our anticipated cost increase.
Just a quick, for Bob's sake, COLA cost of living adjustment.
Sorry, sorry. And then next year, the following years, we have two fives, a five and a five, which basically covers the contract, the MOU agreement increases.
And that's anticipated strictly to cover staff's cost, or is there sort of implied in that some equipment and other type of capital expenditures?
All of that, yes, all of that. It's the reimbursement fees, the new equipment, the capital, all of that is included in that 5 percent increase.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? Are we ready for a motion? Or the resolution?
I would move approval of Resolution Number 28. Oh, 29. 29, ratifying the fiscal year 2008 Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department Revenue and Appropriations Budget.
Is there a second? Second. Real call, please.
Councilmember Teague Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may just comment, we asked this today at the Fire Board meeting. Belmont has already approved the budget as well, so that, that means it can come back to the Fire Board.
Very good, thank you for adding that. All right, the next item is 10C. This is regarding a bit of a problem we have downtown with people backing into angled parking spaces. This is something that you don't see much of, but when it's there, you got to wonder how it happens, and now we know. Bob, would you like to take us through this?
Big glance here. Indicated to the Chief. I've had people cut in front of me and make that U-turn on Lowell Street and go right into a spot even head-on, you know, so, can't believe they would do the same thing back in. So we're, this ordinance is being proposed to eliminate someone backing into one of those spaces, so, I mean, it's, it's a double illegal move. First illegal move is to make that U-turn across the street, which is an illegal U-turn in a business district, and the second is to now back into a spot. So it seems to me they could be ticketed in either case.
I understand from the, from the report, we have the ability to ticket someone who makes a U-turn into a space, but we don't have the ability to ticket someone back in, right?
Correct, and the problem is if you don't see the U-turn being made, it's not in your presence, and then you can't, there's no one to give a ticket to. But if someone is parked illegally now with the back end in the angled space, then a ticket can be given.
You do see that back end, that's true.
Just a quick question for clarification. I notice, or I know sometimes there are construction or repair types of vehicles that for one reason or the other may come in at 2 o'clock in the morning, and it makes sense for them to back in. Do we have the ability to provide exemptions for sort of said types of uses, or do we want to, or do we want to just simply talk to the police chief at the time and say, enforce this for, well, not selective enforcement, but you know what I'm trying to say?
We don't want selective enforcement, but on the B2, it does have an exemption for vehicles which are actually engaged in the process of loading or unloading goods or free, and that would be similar. I would think that in the interpretation of the ordinance by the officer, that the kind of activity you're describing would be, wouldn't be covered. I mean, they're there for a business reason.
Mm-hmm.
And if you can think of a different way to word that, then we can.
Yeah, I just, I was thinking of something like, or engaged in providing, you know, services to resolve some type of minor emergency type of thing. Because that's, that's really, I think, more, well, and I'm not, I don't want to wordsmith this to death.
I'm not sure I can think of an example necessarily that would cover that, though.
Because I know, like up in San Francisco, I think of the construction types and trades that actually have probably some exemption for double parking and things like that, just because.
I don't think there's an exemption, I think they just do it.
Well, I know they, I know they have to get little permits that identify them as trade, so I just took that leap of faith and thought that there might be some exemption, but.
I think they'll cover that.
I think, you know, I'd be perfectly happy to introduce this ordinance as written, and if it turns out to be a problem, come back and modify.
There you go. You want to make a motion?
Absolutely, so I would move introduction of ordinance Number 1389, 2007, 1389, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, revising Section 10.32.O70B related to diagonal parking.
Second. Any other question on the motion? All in favor? I'm going to be counting, real call, please.
Councilmember Teague Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
The final item on the agenda tonight is a consideration of the composition of the SBWMA Board of Directors.
Mayor, members of council, this is coming to you in response to a letter you received earlier this year from a council member in the City of Belmont. This has to do with the composition of the South Bay Sideways Management Authority Board of Directors, and actually the Executive Director of the SBWMA, Kevin McCarthy, is with us tonight as well, in case you have any questions for Kevin. Basically, the background on this item was the SBTSA, which was the precursor organization to today's JPA, was founded in June of 1982, and in those days, a transfer station was established on the border of the City of San Carlos and Redwood City. As you know, from your budget hearing recently, the city receives a so-called tipping fee as garbage is transported to and from that site in this year's budget. That's $1.3 million revenue item. Because of the fact that that site was located in the City of San Carlos, part of the JPA, going all the way back to the beginning in 1982, was that the City of San Carlos was deemed the Finance Director for this entity as well as the Chair, and also provided some staff support, and that occurred up until very recently. In 1999, the JPA was amended to allow the 12-member agencies to purchase the transfer station and ultimately a building next door to the transfer station, which became known as the recyclery. The rationale for that was that if the cities were at a future date to go out to RFP for garbage and recycling, they would be able to get more competitors to propose because they own both the recyclery and the transfer station. So that change was made in 1999. In 2005, the JPA was amended two years ago, and essentially several key changes were made. One was to change the day-to-day operations from the chairperson, who at that time was the, the City Manager, the Assistant City Manager in San Carlos, to a full-time Executive Director, which ultimately became Mr. McCarthy. Also, it changed the bylaws so that the Chair of the JPA no longer was automatically one of the two city management positions in San Carlos, but rather rotated. And for the last two years, the Chairman of that group has actually been Larry Patterson, who's the Public Works Director in the City of San Mateo. The other change, or several other changes were made in 2005. In terms of board membership, the board membership was tightened so that it now lists a specific group of positions, namely City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, Public Works Director, or Environmental Programs Manager, rather than the past practice of having both management and mid-management positions represented on that board. The concern was that while San Carlos has always been represented by a City Manager or Assistant City Manager, and that, of course, is because of our special interest in this particular operation, given the location of those facilities, some of the other cities, the rank, how can I say this nicely, the rank of the person on the board seemed to drop over the years, and I suppose in some respects that was probably due to the fact that the service quality on the board was rather high, and people were relatively happy with what was going on there, so the, the service level dropped. But in 2005, that was changed to tighten it up, so now you have to have one of these six positions where you cannot be on the board. Also, there was some discussion about further empowering the member agency councils and governing boards, so several powers were taken away from the SBWMA and handed back to the member agencies. So at this point, items such as the acquisition of real property, the disposal of real property, entering and or amending franchise agreements, and also issuing refinancing bonds, now all require a two-thirds vote of the member agency as well as the SBWMA Board. During that discussion in 2005, the City of Belmont City Council also proposed that the board makeup be changed from department managers to city council members, and that was circulated at the same time. During that discussion, only three agencies, namely Belmont, Redwood City, and the West Bay Sanitary District, were in favor of such a change. The other nine agencies were not. As a result, that amendment was not included in the proposed amendments, and as a result, the overall 2005 JPA amendment was approved on a 10 to 2 vote, with Belmont and West Bay Sanitary voting no, the other agencies voting yes. And then more recently, late last year, there was some concern in the City of Belmont about rate increases, and once again, the issue of board composition was raised, initially was raised by Ray Davis, who is the Public Works Director in Belmont, who sits as the Belmont SBWMA representative, and as you can see by the letter attached from Larry Patterson, the Board Chair of SBWMA, the item was not agended at the board. Mr. Patterson felt that since this matter had been dealt with relatively recently in 2005, there was no need for further discussion, as there was not evidence that two-thirds or more of the member agencies were interested in that change. That was then followed up in March with a letter that apparently went to the Mayor and Board Chair of each of the SBWMA and board chair of each of the SBWMA agencies, and the council members to those agencies, but not to the staff members, once again requesting that change. When this item came to us in March, there was a request to put it on your agenda, after some review, in April last month, I put this on the agenda of the city managers association, and it was discussed at their regular meeting in April. I asked, among other things, if any of the other cities planned to bring this to their city council for consideration, and we were told that other than San Carlos, no one had plans to do that. So that's kind of where we are today, I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, or, as I said, Mr. McCarthy, and also Mr. Lanzon, who is the SBWMA legal counsel, is also available for questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Yes, ma'am.
When you say that this was, and, and, you know, the, the letter also from attachment one states that it was visited recently, the issue was visited recently, well, two questions, how, how often do we review the JPA agreement? And number two, when the JPA agreement was being reviewed, I, I don't recall because the specifics of what I'm going to ask, because I was out of town when this actually came before our council, so I wasn't here for, to review that, so when it was reviewed, was this question put forward very specifically in, in looking at that review of how things work?
Yes, in two thousand five, when this issue was first raised by then Mayor of Belmont, Dave Warden, this was mentioned to the city council, I believe that Lisa Costa-Sanders was staffing the SBWMA at that point in time, and we did bring it to your attention, it was an issue, and the changes that were made, primarily the four bullet points you see in the middle of page two, were believed by the other cities to be impartially in response to the notion of strengthening the member agency elected officials' role in this area, and I think that's one of the reasons that when the request came from Belmont in late two thousand six to revisit the item, many of the member agencies felt that it had already been addressed by the changes that were made in two thousand five. I think as far as your question, councilmember Brokaw, about JPA amendments in this group, they, they tend to come up, in my experience, when there is something of major import that requires amending the JPA, and most of the JPAs that we have around the county, because you have to, of course, go to the many agencies to get a JPA change, they don't change, tend to change them often unless there's something major. Obviously, in this group, for example, the first major change was when we moved in nineteen ninety-nine to buy the two facilities and to issue the revenue bonds, and that was the point at which we also extended the JPA out to twenty-ten, and that was to provide a sufficient length of time for the bonds, and then in two thousand five, the main changes, in addition to this notion of strengthening the role of the city councils in those four areas, also was to recognize that we were going to have a full-time executive director, and also to make these changes on both board membership level, and also on letting the chairmanship rotate as, versus keeping it only in San Carlos.
And one more question, of the four bullet points, there, those franchise, franchise agreements include, I, I don't think it does, but I'll ask the question anyways, are labor negotiations, when we go into labor negotiations, how does that get handled?
Labor negotiations, you mean for the staff at the SBWMA, or do you mean labor relations as it relates to the people who work for Allied?
The latter.
It, it does not involve that, no, that's strictly a matter between the company and the garbage drivers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions for Brian?
I don't have a question for Brian, but I do have one for Mr. McCarthy, if he could step up, I, thank you, by the way, appreciate your patience, sitting for three hours.
I live in San Carlos.
Oh, great.
Close.
Sure. You've worked other places, what is your experience in, in other places on other boards, have they been, have you seen electeds in these situations, and if you have the good or bad points of that situation, and, and if not in the past, then even to speak to this issue of perhaps electeds coming on and maybe making it too political, I, I don't know, I, I'm just asking what your past history is.
I served at the pleasure of staff or elected board, so I'll be careful about what I say. You know, I've traveled all over the country, as I mentioned the last time I spoke to you, so I've seen a lot of JPAs, typically they are elected officials. What I would say, though, is what is, what is typical in those situations is that JPA has a lot more direct control in terms of they hold the franchise agreement specifically, this is the case in Contra Costa County, where they have elected officials on the JPA, and there's not separate franchise agreements with Walnut Creek and the various member agencies, it's actually with the JPA, so there's sort of a trade-off that I've seen, if you have elected officials, more typically, they will have, they'll have the voting rights on rates and on those franchise agreements, and this is sort of the opposite situation, you have, and you have staff on the board, but we don't have those rights, those are, you know, retained for lots of good reasons by the member agency, so that, I think that's typically what I've seen around the country, is there is sort of that trade-off.
So, in your opinion, the way it's being run now, you have a lot of, should we say, experienced people, staff people, who have, you know, run other agencies, been on other JPAs, it's almost like a technical board, I mean, the way I'm hearing it, where, as opposed to electeds get on and it, it could politicize something, where the skill set might not be as, possibly as strong as the folks that are on it now?
Yeah, I think in terms of characterizing it as a technical board, that's right, you know, with, with the mix of finance directors, public works directors, and city managers, you have a, a good mix, I think the, the sort of the balance in the structure is when we're considering voting on things like new franchise agreements, we have to come back to you, so you have that dialogue, it makes my job a little more difficult in terms of having to go out, but, you know, that's not really the point, the point is to have that sort of shared accountability, and I think it works pretty well, I think one of the things that's lacked in the past is there wasn't as much accountability, just because of the historical nature of this being really run by the city of San Carlos, you know, it was more sort of local issues, but I think the fact that we have a chair that rotates, that, you know, you have a full-time executive director, there's a lot more communication going out, and that's certainly one of my goals, to figure out ways to get all of you more engaged, and so I'm, I'm certainly open for those kind of suggestions.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. McCarthy? So the question before us is, do we follow the lead of Belmont and, and suggest that the board structure be changed to elected officials, or are we happy the way it is?
I'll start, I, I tend to think that, I mean, I've served on JPAs where the board is primarily electeds, OES is an example of that, the Hart Funding Board is another example of that for that JPA, which is a housing endowment and regional trust, and I think that in some cases, they're appropriate and they work well, and it provides a level of oversight that I think is, is the right thing to do. In the case of the SBWMA, however, I would almost rather leave the day-to-day operations and some of the decisions that would be involved in the day-to-day operations to a more technical board. I don't necessarily think that anyone sitting up there on the dais has in-deep expertise in, well, all the things that they do.
I am Italian, though.
And, and I think for the important decisions, it's, it's come back, it goes back to the councils for us to make that determination, so it seems to be working well, I think that back in two thousand five, this issue was considered and was rejected at that time, and I voted, you know, basically the same way, I, I don't think that we need to have elected officials on the board of the SBWMA, as long as the JPA agreement brings those issues that are important to us, or very important, back to each council individually, each member agency to vote on, so my, in my inclination on this, unless some other one has some other compelling argument for this, would be just to have considered it and leave it as is.
I see how compelling that can be. Are you compelling?
It seems to me that, given the adjustments that have been made and the structure of the board is working, in my estimation, I don't see a reason to change it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can see that, well, first off, you know, these changes were made pretty recently, and I would agree, let those ride and see how, you know, what kind of results we get from that. I, I would like to do something to, and maybe, you know, it's up to Belmont to do it, but, or to, to support keeping this issue under review, and I would further state that I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to give it to each individual city, so that if we as a city decided we want to send our city manager as our representative, that's completely fine, if, you know, Belmont, for instance, who is pushing for this, wanted to send elected official Coral and Firebuck to be on the board, well, that's fine too, and you leave it up to each agency to represent themselves how they so choose, you know, maybe that would be a way to go, but again, I, I think these changes were made recent enough that we should perhaps see how it performs, and that's A, and B is, let's not just bury this, I think we need to keep it there.
I think, I think that's good, I, I would just have also reminding the council that we have the perfect right to attend the meetings if we want to observe and see how things are going on, and become more familiar with the process, so that avenue is also available to us. Bob?
No, I, I think, you know, I appreciate Mr. McCarthy's comments, and at least it cleared a bit up for me, and, you know, we have the ultimate power to, as we will later on, either this year or in two thousand nine, as we get closer along, we'll be picking the next garbage company and, and the rates and the services that we have, the heavy lifting's going to be done by, by that group, and we're gonna, but we're gonna have the final say on all of it, so it's not like we're, we're removed from the process and we have no control, and we have the, the final control, quite honestly, even on our rates, we didn't have to necessarily raise our rates or do whatever we can choose, sometimes it's a fait accompli, but it, it's something that we still have the right to do, so I would tend to agree that we should, although again, as, as councilmember Brokaw said, I think more and more, just as in the fire JPA, where we've made it a somewhat of a weaker, you could say weaker JPA, and that many of the items are coming back to us, which is good, because the more we know about everything we, we have under our control, the better off we are, and I think with the new executive director, which has obviously just been, Mr. McCarthy's only been here, I think, a year, year and a half, not even, I think that's a whole thing that we need to, to see how the process works, and I believe it's working well right now, so I would, I would concur that I, I wouldn't necessarily support this, this letter at this time.
Okay, I would agree with the council, do we need a, a motion, just?
No, I, I think the sense of the council's fine.
Okay, well, the sense of the council you have, so, that, that runs it up for this evening, thank you very much, and leave us adjourned.